The President and Board of Trustees, roll call.
Trusty Ojowski.
Here.
Trusty Bonucci.
Here.
Trusty Lamb.
Here.
Trusty O'Rourke.
Here.
Trusty Peck.
Here.
Trusty Rassich. Mayor Collins.
Here. If we could rise to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to approve the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Workshop held on March 14th.
Go move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries presidential comments?
I have none this evening.
Trustees' comments?
I just want to point out and essentially thank staff as well as I dots, the stoplight at Meadow and 126 is operational. Thank you very much for all the hard work. I've been probing about this particular stoplight for several years and it's come to fruition. And it's really nice to see nice things happen in Plainfield that can essentially make transportation go a little smoother in our little neck of the woods over there. So, thank you very much.
I just had a question, I guess, or a comment. Spring is coming, I guess, this week. It's supposed to get warmer. And with that, one of the big things in the news we see about now is the new Zika virus. I know in the past, we used to spray for the western island mosquitoes. Do we as a village do any mosquito abatement any longer? And if not, is that something we should maybe reconsider?
I guess, just to touch on that briefly, and of course, we'll follow the board's lead, however you would like to lead staff. In the past, the township actually had funded and had completed spraying within the township and within the village. And then policy did change and they didn't cover the boundaries of the village for a period of time. Now, we're going back probably about 10 years ago. Every year since then, we've required the tablets, the larvicide tablets, to be placed in the storm sewers. And the public works crews will go out and install those in all of the catch basins and including many of the retention ponds too as well. That method seems to be very effective too as well. Spraying is limited based on weather and based on just the time that it's done. It's only effective for a short period of time. And then you have other residents that have expressed concern over the spraying because it is a chemical that you're releasing into the air too as well. So, we will continue to apply the larvicide to each one of the storm sewers throughout the community. But the spraying would be another item that is currently not, was currently not part of this year's plan at this point.
Would it be appropriate, maybe to just add some of those comments maybe to the next water bill? And I know on the top, we add some things in there just to let people know that there is at least a larvicide being applied and...
We can take a look at maybe doing that with their E-News. I know the next edition of the water bill is going to include information about the at-your-door service and the water rates related to that, so...
Maybe the other venues, proper way. I don't, I'm just bringing it up.
We will be sure to get outward on our mosquito abatement effort.
I think it's just gonna, it seems like it's more and more in the news every day. And I know with the birth defects and everything, it's gonna be more critical if it makes it this far north. I'm not sure if it will, but certainly it's an option. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I have one comment to make. On April the 30th and May the 1st, the Village of Plainfield and other groups are going, are, for example, Community Christian Church, Plainfield United Methodist Church, Hope United Methodist Church, and St. Mary's, Immaculate Parish, the Village of Plainfield, and other community groups are going to be involved in something called "The Big Serve." Change the World is a community-wide effort to bring about very positive benefits to the Village of Plainfield. Tonight, we have with us General Chairperson, Mr. Murphy. I will hold this behind him because he's gonna talk about something called "The Big Serve." He's gonna talk about "The Big Serve." Last year, if you were involved in it, you had a great time. I mean, it's an effort to do good in the Village of Plainfield. Someone famous one time said, "If you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem." If you want to help in the Village of Plainfield, be part of the solution and cooperate. Join. Sign up. And Mr. Murphy's going to tell you how to do that. There were, I don't want to go through the audience of all the participants that were at last year's event. But it's really a heartrending, heartwarming event to partake in. And at the end of the day, they have really a delicious lunch over at Plainfield Central High School. But Mr. Murphy will address it just a little bit more than I did.
I don't know that I can sell it any better than you just sold it there, Trusty Rassich. Thank you very much. And thanks for the sign.
We'll wear that same with us.
"The Big Serve: Change the World" started as an idea between us and our faith community here in the community about three years ago with the idea that there was an opportunity for us to provide a venue or a way for residents to actually choose to volunteer in the community. Just for a weekend, maybe get to learn a little bit more about some of the different charities that are available and possibly even get involved. We have 27 different charities that we help to support and sponsor. They aren't all necessarily based here in the Village of Plainfield, but they're Plainfield and the general area. And they serve the Plainfield and general community. Last year, we had 900 volunteers and we are really thrilled with that. When you think about a town that has 40,000 residents to grab 900 volunteers to give their service to our community over two days is truly fantastic. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank actually the trustees, all who have participated in making this come together. And of course, I have to especially thank Alan Persons and John Prue and the Police Department for all that they've done to help out in the past. The library's been a great team partner of ours. The Park District is helping out as well this year. So, we're very lucky and blessed to have a bunch of people that really want to give back to the community. And it bears, worth repeating, our, this year, that is Plainfield Community Christian, Hope United Methodist, Plainfield United Methodist, and St. Mary Immaculate are faith partners this year. They've been absolutely fantastic. They really do a lot of the heavy lifting along with the individuals that I mentioned earlier. So, please do come on out and help out. It's a great two days of volunteering. You can look up information about it at thebigserve.info. That's thebigserve.info. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments?
I'll chime in a little bit on that. My job last time was take pictures of everything went on. And every place I went, the dedication was just phenomenal. People were having a good time. They worked very hard. They didn't stop. Think somebody would slack off? Well, they really didn't.
No.
They were digging up weeds. They were making blankets. They were passing out food. And people were very appreciative. It was amazing just to go around and see all this. So, it's a good event to be part of. You're with a lot of people who care and you love caring too. So, I highly recommend getting involved.
Trusty Lamb, you're a great photographer. And I left that out the last time when I was talking about "The Big Serve." So, you did a great job because that's an important part of it too, to have that historical that comes with someone going around and taking the pictures and all the things that are going on that you forget about. So, thank you for that. And I apologize for leaving you off the list last time. Sorry.
Are there any other trustee comments?
We could take over an hour just laying out all the thank yous to all the people that make this happen and all the folks that are involved. So, I probably forgot a few folks myself just now. So, for those that I forgot, know that you're in my heart.
One last comment. Hate to go twice tonight. I have a small request for staff. It's nothing that I'm looking for the board to receive immediately, but something in the next six months if it can come back to us. The Kendall County Board, I believe, has passed a, what they refer to as a cupcake ordinance, which we have something similar that we did. And they did a lot of work with, I believe, their state's attorney and reaching out to people in Springfield. If we can look at theirs, I have a feeling it may be extremely intricate. Then at some point in six months or a year, when we look at the rest of our ordinances, we can see if there's anything in theirs we want to borrow and amend to ours. That'd be great. Thank you.
Are there any other trustee comments? Not this would be the time for public comments?
Good evening. As a member of Community Christian Church, Trusty Rassich can concur with your comments wholeheartedly. It certainly is a great initiative. And Administrator Murphy, appreciate your leadership in the community, truly making a difference. Good evening. My name is Robert Epley and I'm the Executive Director of the Plainfield Riverfront Foundation. Our mission of the foundation since our inception has been to stimulate interest and create awareness among the residents and businesses of the village in Plainfield in offering education, collecting ideas, fostering public appreciation of the natural environment, and to facilitate the planning of and providing financial assistance through the collection of donations and grants to benefit the execution of the riverfront master plan as approved by the Plainfield Village Board. Our long and short-term vision has been and will continue to be offering a unique, exciting, attractive riverfront corridor that links residents, visitors, and our businesses alike to the village's history, geography, and culture in sustainable ways that essentially is a destination-enhancing economic driver in our area. Most recently, I was hired into my position as a full-time salary director, charged with the task of furthering goals and objectives as set forth by the Riverfront Foundation's Board of Directors. These directives include that of prioritizing and determining viable components of the riverfront master plan that can be taken from conception, supported by funding, and implemented along the riverfront. Our successes to date include having a financial stake and offering support of $125,000 to the Plainfield Park District and completing the first phase of the DuPage River Trail on the riverfront property. We've also been very grateful to the Village of Plainfield for the allowance of utilizing and transforming the old wastewater treatment plant offices into a community conference and educational center. We've also funded a legacy brick patio overlooking the river, a concession serving area, along with public restrooms for use on the property. Most recently, we have partnered with the Plainfield Police Department and assisted with fundraising for a canine memorial project, recognizing and honoring all those past, present, and future canines and their respective handlers for their service and protection to our community. As we continue to focus on the redevelopment and revitalization of the riverfront property and creating a destination, we are looking at such priorities as an entry gateway feature to the property. A grand pavilion to stand where once stood the same during the early 1900s of the electric park era. We're also exploring the completion of a parking lot designated near the entry of the property for visitors to safely park and respect the recent development. Other objectives include, under review, include implementing river overlooks, providing better access to the vibrant river's edge. Lighting along the river also is a major priority to enhance safety for those utilizing park and trail. And last but not least, determining how we can support the village with an old village dump area that needs attention as this property continues to grow in accessibility and usage. These are just a few samplings of directives given to me to explore and determine their viability in supporting the Village of Plainfield and revitalizing what the foundation considers to be an economic gem to the area and both from a recreational and monetary aspect to our downtown. With these priorities stated, how do we fund and support? In my short time as full-time Executive Director, we are positioning ourselves to be the marketer, the branding agency, the event organizers, and recipients of community and state support through donations, grants, and again, from funding that come from special events that create a longstanding culture here in our village. Our major fundraiser is that of Plainfield Fest, in which this evening, you as a board will discuss village costs associated with this event, held in the downtown since its inception in 1970s, in the early 1970s. We as a foundation assumed this event five years ago. With funding at near zero, we now run a very successful event, drawing nearly 15,000 people on an annual basis to the downtown for a three-day weekend. These attendees participate in an atmosphere that is safe and enjoyable for all ages. Highlighted by the beautiful backdrop of the downtown, the village recently resurrected with improvements and thusly creating awareness of the vast array of retail shops and restaurants for those to partake in that weekend. And let's not forget the times they revisit on days following and weekends following as well. Let's be clear. We're very fortunate to have Mayor Collins and the Village Board's support in allowing us such an event to support the riverfront redevelopment. However, we are also cognizant there are costs associated with working in conjunction with Public Works and the Plainfield Police Department. As I have stated publicly with Mayor Collins, Administrator Murphy, and Chief Conapek in the past, we as an organization certainly do not wish to be a burden on expenses within the Village of Plainfield. However, we believe in his investment. We believe in investment in Plainfield Fest and downtown has and will continue to offer advancement in the revitalization of the riverfront. Again, I reiterate, it is our sole intent to add a vibrancy to a village that has a waterway running through its town. How many others would welcome such a river creating the potential recreational and economic impact ours may have? If enhanced costs become associated and are directed by the Village Board onto the Plainfield Riverfront Foundation, we indeed, I am fearful, will lose the investment of nearly $200,000 the Village of Plainfield invested in the master plan that was adopted. And the influence of the foundation's ability to support will decrease considerably with previous priorities losing their true reality. I thank you for the opportunity to expand tonight on the foundation's mission, values, our current and future initiatives. I hope this gives you a better understanding of how the village's money specific to Plainfield Fest is directed and saving the foundation an expense that I believe is offset with our drive to enhance economic development and residential vibrancy in the Village of Plainfield. I look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Epley. You have one moment. Under normal circumstance, the board generally has a policy of not addressing remarks that are made by the public. But I have one particular, your written remarks were very detailed this evening. Is there a possibility you could give this board a copy of what you said?
By all means, sir.
It was complex and the number of issues that you brought up financially, et cetera, et cetera, were, as I said, complex. And it would be appreciative for me to be able to read it. If you would do that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd be glad to.
Epley, thanks for coming. You can sit down or you don't have to stand. No big deal. And our policy does allow for us to, you know, converse with public comments. And I do thank Trusty Rassich for responding as well and asking for that information. I look forward to seeing it. But I have to say, as an individual, I've seen the Riverfront Foundation grow. The different events have gotten better and better. And I do support the volunteers as well as Mr. Epley. I do support his position as Executive Director. There becomes a point when a not-for-profit does need full-time staff versus strictly relying on volunteers. So, thank you for coming this evening. And I look forward to getting the document that Trusty Rassich requests the board receive.
Are there any other public comments? Not, we'll proceed with the workshop meeting. First item on the agenda was Polo Club Residential Concept Plan.
Thank you. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to provide a brief introduction to the project here. Staff and applicant in this case are seeking input and direction from the Board of Trustees regarding a concept plan for a proposed residential development on what's known as the Polo Club, east of Route 59 and north of 119th Street. Their proposal calls for 513 homes on approximately 110 acres of the former Polo Club site. Those dwelling units would be comprised of a primarily, an active lifestyle, age-restricted senior community, which would include single-family detached homes as well as a ranch-style townhome. And in addition, the project does also propose a multifamily market-rate apartment component. Just for brief reference in terms of the village's comprehensive plan, the area is designated as medium-density residential in the comprehensive plan, which provides a density range of 2.1 to 3 dwelling units per acre. It is located along 119th Street, which is a minor arterial and also a strategic regional arterial in proximity to Route 59, which is a major arterial. And the site itself does include a section of Book Road, which is a future Book Road extension, which is identified in the comprehensive plan as a major collector. At this time, it's staff's intention to turn the floor over to the applicant to give a presentation and introduce the project. And we would be seeking direction from the Village Board on your position relative to the project. And if it merits further evaluation as a formal development proposal, it would come in as an annexation to the village and in all likelihood, a planned development. So, the petitioner is seeking direction from the Village Board on whether this is a project that you think merits further consideration. So, at this time, I would invite Scott Berenbergy and Jim Truesdale from K. Hufnian Homes, as well as Vince Rosanova, their representative, to provide their overview of the project.
Thank you, John. My name is Scott Berenbergy, Director of Land Acquisition with K. Hufnian Homes. With me this evening is Jim Truesdale, our Entitlements Manager, and Vince Rosanova, our Contract and Zoning Attorney. First, wanted to thank you for your time this evening to the Village President and Board of Trustees. This is our second time utilizing the newer process that you've instituted for concept reviews at Committee of the Whole. I think I've told you this before. It's an invaluable process that we hope continues in the village. It allows us to get some great constructive feedback, you know, whenever we develop a concept so that we have a greater understanding of what your expectations are moving forward. Just a brief update on kind of what we've been up to in the Village of Plainfield over the last couple of years. You're all familiar with our 64-lot community at Fairfield Ridge, which opened in August 2014 and became one of the more successful active communities within the village. Since we opened 20 months ago, we've sold 56 of those homes at an absorption of about three a month. So, we're actually looking to close out the community in short order here coming up this summer. Somerset at Grand Park is our most recent grand opening within the village. We have 42 single-family homes in the Grand Park Master Plan. We grand-opened with our onsite model there in October of last year. So, we've only been open about six months. We've sold 11 homes at a slightly slower absorption of two a month. But between the two communities, we've become quickly the most active builder in the Village of Plainfield. We hope to continue our relationship and build upon our strategic partnership. We're projected to close out at Grand Park, most likely sometime in 2017. So, just to orient everybody to the subject property that we're here today to talk about. The Polo Club, as John mentioned, is 110 acres situated at the northeast corner of Route 59 and 119th Street. It's the acreage west of the DuPage River and a small piece of land between us and the river that's owned by the Forest Preserve and east of the landscaping contractor and the prospective future commercial use on Route 59. To the north, we have a single-family residential that was annexed and developed in Naperville, South Point and High Meadows subdivisions. To the south, we have unincorporated residential and industrial. There's also a large portion of undeveloped land you see there to the south and southeast that is owned by the Forest Preserve and we understand will be open space in perpetuity. A little bit about the site history and heritage itself. It's been owned by a group of family friends for the past 30 years. Owners include John Green, Dick Coon, Dr. John Coon, Bill Reed, and Ari Hogendorf. They bought the property initially as a private family use for them to enjoy. They all had a love for polo. And long-term, they knew it would be a great investment to buy a large tract of acreage in the Village of Plainfield. Polo facilities were installed over the years and eventually grew to seven, a total of seven fields with an indoor riding facility and private summer barns. The site has hosted international tournaments and celebrities from all over the world. There's also been a number of private events hosted there, weddings and such. Participation by the family has decreased as the families have gotten a little older and played a little bit less, especially over the last 10 to 15 years. And the primary polo play has been moved to us. We go to Arnmore Farm and Polo Club. So, the site today is currently used by a soccer organization that rents the property and for onsite horse stables. The families have a longstanding history in Plainfield. There's a lot of legacy tied to the site. You know, with us this evening are the Greens, who, you know, certainly are invested in Plainfield. There's a few for-sale signs with John Green's name on them, visible from Village Hall. And I'd venture to guess that the majority of residential and commercial transactions that take place have John Green's office associated with them. So, they were very concerned about making sure that they picked the right developer for the property, made sure it was the right time to execute on that, on that concept and move forward. Previous discussions with the Village of Plainfield regarding development of the site have included a residential concept in 2005, which ultimately fell victim to the impending housing downturn. One of the more exciting developments over the years has been a concept for shops at the Polo Club to the property west of what we're here to talk about today with a Von Mar anchored lifestyle commercial center, which was proposed in 2007, again with the property adjacent to Route 59. We're at an interesting time in Plainfield's history. Market has continued to stabilize over the last number of years. K. Hufnian and other builders like us have built through a lot of the finished lot inventory that we were left with after the housing downturn. And as much fun as it is to resubdivide and redevelop other builders' property from 10 years ago, as we've done at Fairfield Ridge and Somerset at Grand Park, we're very excited about entering a new era in the village's history and we can entertain raw development again. The Polo Club is the ideal place to lead the charge with that type of development, with its proximity to Route 59, existing and future commercial, and access to all the transportation corridors. Again, we were selected as lead developer of the Polo Club. What we're contemplating is an active lifestyle use on the majority of the site, which would be age-restricted, 55 and over. Our active lifestyle brand is called Four Seasons. Jim Truesdale will introduce the brand and a little bit of how we execute this type of development. And we have a multifamily apartment component that would be adjacent to the future commercial. We think that the development as a whole is really going to drive and expedite further development to our west on Route 59. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening. It's nice to be before you tonight. Appreciate your time. So, I'll take a few minutes to kind of follow up on what Scott was talking about and get into some more of the details of the plan. I know you've received some information on it, so I'll just kind of walk through that and go into it a little more deeply. It is an act, what we call an active lifestyle community. It's really truly what we call more of a resort-type of community. That's the kind of feel that we're trying to generate. It will be age-restricted to 55 years and over. It'll be a maintenance-free community. So, your lawn, your yard, all the open space areas will be taken care of. And it'll be a fully amenitized community. And I'll get into that in a little bit and all the types of amenities that we provide as part of these, as part of these communities. This, while it's fairly new for K. Hufnian to do a, what we call a Four Seasons active lifestyle community in Chicago, where we've been doing them throughout the United States for quite some time. There's been about 30 other Four Seasons active adult communities throughout the United States. Currently have 15 Four Seasons communities located in 10 states in the country. Most of these communities are pretty large. They're between 300 to 800 homes. The amenity package is kind of where the focus is of these communities. And as we get into the plan, you can see how that works. And you may be familiar with some of these. It's kind of Del Webb-type communities. It's kind of Del Webb-type communities. With those types of amenities, create that resort is what we're looking for here. It will contain a clubhouse, which is the social hub of the community. It'll be the central focus of the community when you enter. That's where people will go for the social activities. It will be staffed. There are gathering and activity rooms in there, including kitchenettes, fitness aerobic centers, and I'll go through some of those with you shortly. We also have a number of outdoor activities that are also associated with the clubhouse area, which includes tennis courts, bocce ball courts, pickleball, swimming pool, decks, patios, those types of activities to really create kind of the social focus for the community. This gives you an idea of what we've done in other communities. It shows you an example inside the clubhouse. We've got the pool table, some sitting areas, lounging areas, and you can see an example of one of the other clubhouses we've done, which gives you an idea of the type of quality that we'd be looking to do here. The clubhouse itself that we're proposing here, or will be proposing here, will be about 6,500 to 7,000 square feet. So it's a sizable facility for a community of this size. It'll also contain athletic exercise rooms, game rooms, a library, and then you see another example of one of our clubhouse's in one of the other communities, to give you an idea of what this will look like. As far as the exterior of the amenities outside the clubhouse, you can see the bocce ball courts, swimming pools, and tennis courts. So we'll put a lot of work and effort into really creating that resort-type feel. We want, when somebody comes home here, we want them to feel like they're coming home to resort, almost like they're on vacation. These people are 55 and over, people like me, you know, that appreciate now getting out of the home they've maintaining all these years, and getting into a community where you can kind of feel like you're on vacation. You can sit by the pool, you can meet with your neighbors, and you don't have all the maintenance and things you would have to do on a regular basis in your, where you've been living most all your life. So it's a time to kick back a little bit. This is an example of some of the entry features we've done at other communities throughout the country. And again, we're trying to create that resort feel. So when you come home here, you really get a sense of arrival, that you're coming in, that this is kind of a resort, and you're home, and this is a place to come and relax. So we create the large landscaped entry areas with medians, with nice entry features, and lush landscaping throughout. These are some examples of the types of homes that we will be building in the community. This is our single-family detached, detached homes. And I will add to this, that these are examples of homes we build throughout the country. We're still going to be working on the specific designs for Plainfield. We understand that you have certain design guidelines. We'll be working with your staff on that as we move through the process. But this gives you an idea of the character that we're trying to achieve. And these homes range, they're all ranch homes, all, so they're all master bedrooms. It's first-floor living. They can range from 1,500 to 1,600 square feet, up to a little over 2,000 square feet on the first floor. Most of these homes will also offer loft space. You can see here a dormer on the second floor there. So you have the ability, if you buy, say, this 1,000-square-foot home, to add a loft that doesn't really add a full second floor, but it builds up into that roof space area. And what that's used for is people can add on to these, and they can create another living space up there, which would consist of a sitting area, of a bedroom, and a bathroom. And it's really intended for a guest space, when people come to visit them, for when their kids come, their grandkids come. It gives them that upstairs space, so their guests can have some private space, and they would live downstairs, normally all on that ranch level. But we will be coming in with a variety of different product types and a variety of different elevations. This is an example of some of the interiors that we'd be looking at. And these are important to the sense that the people we're marketing to here are generally going to be people that you find living locally, living here in town. And they're likely people who have been in their home for quite a long time. And the homes may be outdated, they may need some repairs, and so what we're looking for is something they can move into that would be a new home, that they wouldn't have to worry about any repairs or anything for a number of years. It would be maintenance-free, and it would offer updated living environment. It would contain all the modern features, all the modern designs that you would find today in a brand-new home that they may not have in the home that they came from. So it really allows them to kind of start fresh and to get some of those amenities maybe they didn't have for a period of time. We're also going to be building here as part of our development, some townhome component. What I'm showing here, this is actually not one of our products, but this is a product that's currently being developed. If you're familiar with the Caroline Club project up in Naperville, up at 95th Street, this is a ranch-townhome. We're going to be designing our own product of this character, so we're in the process of doing that, and we'll have those as we move forward throughout the development. But I wanted to show you this, so you can see the character of what we're trying to achieve. As far as the ranch, again, ranch living, so everybody's on one level, they're low level. It's a courtyard-type of product, so it has four-sided architecture with patios coming off each side. So there's no clear rear to the building. Everybody can live and have their patio in different portions around this building. And the driveway is all in a little courtyard, and the garage is, so they're hidden back. So as you go down the street, as you can see, especially in some of these down at the bottom here, you really see the elevations of the buildings. You don't see a row of six garages like you might see in a normal, standard, front-loaded townhome product. So we've, we're going to be working to develop our product that will fit this type of concept, and we feel this would be a strong component of the community. One of the other components that we're, that is part of what we're proposing today is an apartment component. The apartment component is not part of the age-restricted community. This will be part of our overall plan, but it will be separate from the age-restricted community. It will be done, we're working with an apartment developer, who will work on these plans and this product as we move through the process. But we are proposing this as, in addition to the other, the other homes that we'll be building out there. We feel what this will do, does is add more diversity to the housing type. We think it's a good, healthy thing for the community, because you're bringing in also other people that are on the other end of the spectrum, where you make, you'll get younger people coming in here, but also people that will still support the community, support Plainfield, support the commercial growth in the community. And it provides a good mix, and I think that's healthy, and it'll be an important component of this community. One of the things that we liked about this, and if we go backwards, we're working to make sure that these are complementary to each other, and there's a synergy between these uses out there. So when you're looking at the townhome here, which is a ranch-townhome, and then you go back to the apartment, we want to make sure that character is there, so that they complement each other. And we're also keeping this as a somewhat low-density apartment, because we're keeping these to no more than two stories, so that when we develop this, we have our homes that are ranch homes, that will then transition into the two-story apartment homes, which then ultimately will transition back into future commercial as it develops over to the west of the site. With that, I'll get into the site plan, and you have this in your packet. This, again, shows you some of the photos that give you an idea of the character of what we're trying to achieve with this community. As we said, it's 110.5 acres. There's, we're proposing 147 of the single-family detached lots, 114 of the townhome, and 252 of the multifamily apartments, for a total of 513 total units. And I'll jump to the next slide, because it gives you a little better close-up that we can speak to. The way we try to design this, again, as I mentioned earlier, is the amenity center becomes the central focus of the overall plan. You can see as the, as you go into the main entry, you have your divided median coming in, your signage, your grand entry into the development, which then, the first thing you see as you come in is the amenity center itself, which has all of the features that we talked about earlier. We then surround that with our single-family attached program throughout the, throughout the central portion of the community, and then work on the townhome elements on both sides of the community. So we break those up for a couple of reasons. The townhomes that are over on the west side of the community will then act as a buffer to the future commercial that would happen to the west. They act as a buffer to, from the single-family homes that are existing to the north, to the apartment buildings. And they're also put in a location where they will be closer to commercial uses. They'll be closer to what's going to happen down the road, so the people that are in the, where the most density is, is closest to that commercial area and the easiest access over there. We're also looking to provide easements, so that they can have access over to the commercial property to the west. We're looking to also provide an emergency connection between the townhome area and the apartment area. The other townhomes are on the east side of the community. On that side, we're putting it all up against the open spaces. We're trying to take, again, the most people and put them close to the open space. So now, if a person comes in and wants a townhome, they can choose if they want to live more towards the site closer to the commercial or closer to the open space, but they can take advantage and use that open space as a backdrop to the townhomes in the community. That's then all tied together through a walking path system. You'll see the red dashed line through there. One of the important things in an active lifestyle community like this is walking paths. That's one of the features that people look for the most. So we want to make sure we tie a pathway system together to bring everybody from both sides of the development to the center and to the amenity feature, as well as getting them over to that east side of the development, because on the east side, you've got the DuPage River, and that's one of the really nice features we have here, because this location not only takes advantage of commercial along 59 and the ability for people to get there and to get that access north and south, but it gives them access to everything that's the open space on the east side, which includes the DuPage River, which includes the Forest Preserve that virtually surround that portion of the property. So as part of that system and to connect it all together, we'll be building, as part of this development, the DuPage River Trail along the river, back through that area, so we can bring people out to that, to that area, so they can, it truly becomes part of the development, and then part of the larger community. We want these paths to be open to other people as well, who can use the pathways through this, through this system. I'll jump over real quick. You did see this in your packet. We are showing the DuPage River Trail and how we envision it. This is obviously an early sketch, but it gives you an idea. If you look at the bottom of that first slide, you can see our stormwater detention basin in the foreground and the river in the background. And through, in between that area would all be permanent open space, trail systems that eventually would connect throughout the region. And, because as we understand it, this trail is planned for the entire region, and so this would be a component that we would, that we would construct as part of this, of this community. The other thing I'm showing in the bottom here is just a cross-section to kind of show how this would treat our neighbors to the north and the single-family homes. Those homes typically, as you can see, are about 80 to 90 feet away from our property line. We would then construct a small berm and landscaping along that property line as a buffer to those homeowners. But really, the transition will be very simple here, because our homes will be all ranch homes, whether it's a townhome or a single-family home. They're all ranch, they're low-level, so it's going to be very complimentary to what happens to our neighbors to the north. So we think we can work to treat that very well. With that, I will end what I have to say, and I will let Vince close here.
At this point, you could obviously tell we're very excited in the, you can see that. I hope it's evident in the level of detail with the concept plan and the presentation. Perhaps it would be most beneficial at this point in the evening to hear feedback, and obviously Jim, Scott, and I are available for any questions as well.
I had a couple of questions for you. With the 252 apartments, is that the economic driver of the whole project?
Certainly an important component. It's not the economic driver. I don't believe without that component, the project overall is viable. So the apartment component really serves three essential purposes. It helps the overall project become viable and move forward. It meets a much-needed demand in the community. Those that are wanting to be in the Plainfield community, establish roots but aren't ready for everything that comes along with homeownership, and as Jim alluded to in his presentation, it's an excellent transition between the high intensity of uses we see on 59 and the future commercial, down to our less-intensive, age-restricted, senior component to the east.
So without the apartment component, it's a non-viable project?
I believe that would be accurate.
And then, if, so it is the economic driver, then? And if so, how many apartments can be pared back from the 252 number to what would be sustainable for the whole project?
From the apartment developers that I've worked with in the past, I believe that the 252 is pretty much the minimum that they would need. And I've listened to other multifamily developers before this board as well, and I think they wanted to be more in the three-plus, to make it what they would call institutional-grade.
Do the apartment dwellers get to use the amenities by the clubhouse and all the other amenities that the development has?
Excellent thing about these two components is we think that there's not only a great synergy between the two of them, but also a nice product, which I'm sure we get into later. But to answer your question directly, the senior component has its own fully amenitized clubhouse with all the recreational opportunities that Jim discussed, but also the apartment component would have its own clubhouse, pool, conference room, exercise rooms, things that are typically associated with more high-end luxury apartment communities. So they would be separate communities, each with their own clubhouse and amenities.
Vince, I'm going to interrupt the board's questions of you. I know that you met with the city of Naperville with regard to how this project works with our boundary agreement. I was wondering if you can speak to that.
Absolutely. So we envision this as a very collaborative process. Obviously, that's why we're here at the inception, back from this board. We've also met with the Plainfield Park District to discuss the trails, the paths, the open space. We've reached out to the school district, and we know that there's a boundary agreement in place with the city of Naperville. So we wanted to sit down to discuss that boundary agreement, because it has certain provisions specific to extending Book Road through the Will County Forest Preserve, ultimately to 119th Street. Me personally, I think that that was part of a traffic implementation plan 30 years ago, and it's a road to nowhere, and maybe some would argue an unnecessary four-lane pavement section. When that was envisioned, the Forest Preserve hadn't acquired all that property down to the south. The Forest Preserve adjacent to South Point hadn't been developed. That's very serene, beautiful back there. I think to punch a four-lane road through there would be shortsighted. I think the real impetus of why Naperville wants that roadway extension is to address left-turn movements from the existing South Point subdivision, as there's no signal, where the thought is if there's a road, you could exit South Point, make a right, go to that Book Road extension down to 119th. I don't think that makes a whole lot of sense, and the city of Naperville has indicated a willingness to work with us on reasonable alternatives. I think that they very well could come around to our way of, for our opinion on it, but it's a process. We're going to have to go through their Transportation Advisory Board and so on. But the meetings with Naperville have been positive. That's the one main point, and that's why we met with them to discuss that extension.
You know, I thought, well, anyway, you know, it says here, "If you're not 55, you'll wish you were." I wouldn't mind being 65, to be honest with you. But everything is 55, with the exception of the apartments. Is that true?
That's correct. And it's not anything of the variety of age targeted. This is actually age-restricted, so children are not permitted. We know of, we know that there's no demographic in any community that people want in its borders more than seniors. It's just a fact. They're overall great for the community. We also know that the senior population is aging. You look at the bell curve, you look at the baby boomers. And we also, lastly, know that there's not enough quality housing opportunities for this senior population. So we think that this would be a perfect opportunity to locate within the Plainfield borders.
You know, I think this, in reality, is going to generate an awful lot of interest. So I just got a couple of basic questions for you. Could you address, for the first price point, if you have a rough idea?
I'm going to defer to Scott.
Of course you do. Rough price point would be, starting with the townhomes, is the, you know, the entry-level product line in the community. Most of the tr- Most of the transactions you'll see in the twos, not to say that you won't see some sales in the threes. Single-family sales will be mostly in the threes, not to say you won't see a number of transaction in the fours. So it'll be a pretty, pretty large spread. You know, to add to Vince's comments a second ago, when we first started meeting with ownership and the Greens specifically, we put our heads together on what the highest and best use for the property is. What led us to active lifestyle above and beyond all the things that have been mentioned today? You know, we have a fantastic comp right up the street. Caroline Club on 95th Street in Naperville is one of the, if not the, most successful active lifestyle communities that have been developed in the Chicagoland area over the last fifteen to twenty years. And that is set to be closing out over the next twelve months. I think they have about fifty homes left to build. Very similar, very similar concept plan to, a very similar site plan to what we have here. They had a, a mid-rise condo component that was probably the only, the only part of their lineup that, that wasn't a strong seller. Their strongest sellers were the single-family and the courtyard townhomes as proposed for the Polo Club. And in place of three- and four-story condos, we're looking at a, a low, low-density, low-level multifamily use.
One last question, because I know other trustees would like to interject their thoughts. Do you have an idea, possibly, when, I know this is really an exciting thing, we, and this board has spoken of this issue before, saying the need is there for senior housing because an awful lot of people want to move, obviously, out of the big four-bedroom home into a situation like this. But it doesn't exist in Plainfield, but they want to live in Plainfield. What would you expect, assuming everything went well with not only, you know, obviously you have the land acquisition, the, the approval from the village of Plainfield, all the governmental approval? When do you think this would initiate? And hypothetically, when would people start moving into, for example, townhouses, whatever?
So development timeline, we would certainly hope that, you know, even if the site can't be, can't begin development, you know, first thing in May of seventeen, we would hope that by the end of the development season next year, we would have a shovel in the ground and be putting in phase one of infrastructure on, on 119th Street. You know, in terms of how quickly the build-out would, hope would occur, active lifestyle's one of the only residential uses that even after the downturn had total absorptions approaching 100. You know, there have been communities that have sold, you know, sixty or seventy or eighty or a hundred-plus. So it is one of the faster-selling assets in residential.
One last question. Is this a gated community? Will it be gated partially?
I'll call it quasi-gated.
Okay.
You're familiar with Caroline Club right up?
Yes, I am.
There is a gatehouse, but oftentimes the gate's open and it's not staffed. So it'll be, it'll have certainly a feel of exclusivity. We will, you know, announce our entrance, you know, boldly with entrance monumentations and some type of gatehouse at the primary entrance. But we're not necessarily going to put, you know, a privacy fence around the whole community or anything like that, so it'll be quasi-gated.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
To, to that point, as we discussed in our early meetings, you intend on having these as public streets, correct?
Yeah. Variety of comments and perhaps questions, too. First for Alan. We looked at the clubs, the commercial center there on 59 and 119th. We're talking about doing something on 119th Street. This will add a lot of residents on 119th Street. Construction's going to make a mess. Is there any, any effort to, or plans to widen that anytime in the near future?
Yeah. As part of the development of the commercial piece right on the corner, plans were developed by the original property owner there for the expansion, including turn lanes along Route 59, and then the improvements along 119th Street. And actually, there's, has been, the majority of the properties already acquired to accommodate the development of that project on the corner. Now, that being said, it's only been property acquisition and design development. There hasn't been any design approval process through IDOT. We've communicated with IDOT through that, but there'll definitely be improvements needed at 59 and 119th Street.
And would pay a good share of that or a big share?
Actually, the developer paid a majority of the share related to that.
Developer's not functioning at the moment. Do we expect this developer to pay anything as, as part of that?
Maybe I should, it was, yeah, I believe that it was a developer. It might have been a combination between landowner and the developer. I don't want to misspeak on that point. But it would be the anticipation that the developer here would pay costs associated with the development of drawings and approvals, just like we normally would do with other developments.
That a surprise to you all?
Not at all. If, if I may, as part of the overall development, when it's final engineered, we would expect that the developer would contribute to the ultimate improvement of 119th Street based upon linear frontage, which I think is the customary way to allocate. The other great attribute is, right down the line, with the benefits of the senior community, senior communities have a substantially reduced impact on traffic. Fifty-five-plus, a lot of people don't work full-time, they don't have to be on the road, and in particular, they don't have to be on the road during peak hours. So you're going to see a substantially reduced, and we'll have a traffic study if, if and when we formally submit to support my assertion, but you're going to be, see a substantial reduction in the overall traffic as opposed to what you would see from a traditional single-family development.
Jonathan, if I look at the setbacks, five-foot setbacks are well below our normal, which is a minimum seven and a half. Is this something you have to have, the five-foot setbacks?
This will certainly be developed, and you'll have to work with, with your team and with staff and with plan commission to figure out what the appropriate bulk standards are. That being said, critical mass of unit count here that is more or less the minimum that justifies the amenitization of the site and the significant development undertaking that we have here at the Polo Club. So we, we actually are looking at five-foot minimum side yards with an average side yard of six feet. It doesn't sound like a foot is a lot, but going from five to six feet, actually, in the, in the developments we've had in each case.
What is Caroline's setback? Do you have any idea?
That information will report back to staff.
As you say, it's very successful. In fact, three of my neighbors, we live in a very nice area, roundification all the time anyway, and they moved there anyway. So there's obviously demand in town. They'd rather stay in Plainfield personally. So I, I like the idea of what you're proposing. That's why I make sure we, we do it right. Design of the houses, if you're familiar with running into me on the board in the past, meeting our design standards is very important. I think you've been doing that. I congratulate you on Fairfield Ridge, by the way. For a long time, we had five houses there, several of them empty. Now you're saying it's almost full. I went by and I said, why? Where'd this come from? Just a week or two ago. I go by all the time, I just didn't pay much attention, but really, built outs, you're obviously doing something very well. And the idea of the 55 and over, I strongly support that. I've actually had a unit in California that's in that category for, you know, twenty-some years now. And I like the concept. I'd love to see it here. I'd rather see more people stay here, including me. So this could work out very well. I think the idea of the single-family homes is probably an excellent way to go. The apartments don't bother me if you got a bracket on either side. On the east side, part of that's the floodplain, right? You can't build there anyway. So you're making that kind of a nature path and all that sort of stuff, which is, which is good. So, good design. The amenities are very important. If you're going to have the seniors, they need those kind of amenities to be attractive. So if you promise them, I do hope you deliver those because it's critical. We've had some things before. It's recently where it's not happened, and it's been a bit of a problem, so. But overall, I, I like what you're proposing, and I certainly look forward to having you come in and work on the details for the plan development, because I think, any other setbacks, by the way, a problem? I know the side, side yards are, but...
If I may address that briefly, I know that's something that we would, would definitely take a careful look at, especially in concert with the building department. We've had some recent experience where it can just become a challenge to fit everything in when you factor in, but maybe wouldn't come to mind right off the top of your head, like a foundation egress window or window well, air conditioning units. If a homeowner wants a pedestrian pathway to get into the backyard, it can become a challenge to, to fit everything. So we would certainly work with the developer and, and have the input from the building department. If it meant strategically locating windows, you know, with, with the home placement, if, if a lot needed a little extra setback area, as Mr. Baron Brugge suggested, you know, we could, we could address those in detail. But, you know, when you get down to the level of five, six feet, it can be a challenge to provide, end up with a functional side yard situation at the end of the day.
Needs to, needs to work, so. It may take a look at other areas that have these kind of, Caroline, two Carolines, one in Romiaville, too. So I think the spaces there are much more than five feet for setback in Caroline and Romeo, but I don't know about the one in Naperville. But anyway, let's, look forward to seeing more details emerge, and hopefully it'll work out for you. Be a real asset to the town if you could.
Okay. I've historically not supported apartments. I do, though, however, see some very nice ones in Naperville that are successful, that do have nice amenities. One of the things that I've seen as a challenge is convincing myself or allowing somebody to convince me that an apartment community is going to look like the ones that I see in Naperville in ten, fifteen, twenty years, and not like ones that I see in other communities, I guess. That's one concern that I have when I see apartments come in front of us. You do have a lot of amenities that I think that would be supportive of a positive environment. But more importantly, what, what strikes my mind is, we just had another development go from age-restricted to age-targeted to single-family homes. So my, my question for you is, what market surveys have you done or are planning on doing that you can provide us with some data to show us that this is going to be a success? Now, normally, I don't feel that it's government's business to tell a business, a small business proposal, yeah, you're going to make it or not, and we're going to allow you in, you know, based on if you're going to succeed. But this is a situation where if it doesn't succeed, we'll be right back where we were with another development, you know, when you ask, when someone would potentially come forward and ask for a change of annexation to put a different product, and it's maybe age-targeted or not age-restricted at all if it didn't succeed, okay? So what I want is for this board to be able to see some sort of data that you have to show that this is going to succeed, because it alarms me that we just had another similar, not apples exactly to apples, okay, different amenities, development not work out that was originally age-restricted.
Data will not be a problem. We would anticipate submitting the data supporting this use when we move forward with the full entitlement. And also, I, I think the development that you may be referring to is the Don Harts development that went from age-restricted to non-age-restricted. I don't believe that there was a clubhouse amenity with the recreational activities as well as the walking paths and the proximity to the park district, which really is going to make this one pop and appeal to the demographic we're going after. That may have been more or less a traditional, single-family development that was just age-restricted. And I think that that's going to go a long way to distinguish us from what the village recently saw with that request.
And when you do have that data put together, that you send it to staff, then staff can then forward it to the whole board?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
I think you'll also find that location is really this development's best amenity. Juxtaposed against the other development that you mentioned, you know, this is close to things that, that that site doesn't necessarily have. Proximity to existing commercial, retail, dining, proximity to downtown Plainfield. You know, you've got a lot of folks that are maybe entering retirement, they're still consulting, or they're still working out their last few years. So, you know, a quick shot up into the employment corridor is certainly important even for this demographic. So that's really what's going to drive much stronger demand here.
Excuse me. That was, that's an important point that Trustee Peck mentioned, because we were thinking of that as well. I guess my concern is, is the apartments in terms of the age-restricted living, I think that may be fine. I think the apartments have the potential to be a detriment to when you go to sell those to seniors, to have the apartments right there. And I don't care how nice they are, you know, as things go on, different things change. And that's a huge concern for me. And the other one that I'm thinking of, and to throw this to the board, is we had a similar, not a similar development, it wasn't age-restricted, but we had someone come forward, developer, looking to put about three hundred or so apartments with single-family at 127th Street. So this is a very similar, you know, type of thing, that we said no based on a lot of the apartments. And that's really the hang-up for me. I, speaking for myself, I, what would get built first?
It would be anticipated to be built simultaneously. And I think the common denominator between all the uses is that even though they're, they'll be built and developed by different, different companies, it's all maintenance-free. It's all, like Vince said, almost like resort-style living. So even though we have different buyer profiles that we're appealing to, the maintenance-free community really brands the Polo Club as a whole.
Well, the apartments are truly my concern. That's a lot in, in what looks to be a, a small space. And I think it, my opinion, I think it'll affect some of the, the senior housing as you try to go, move forward with that. But, you know, you may, you may prove that wrong with different studies or whatever. And I guess I'm just concerned is, is that how similar this was to some when we turned down a few months ago. So just for thought, just putting that out there for thought.
I watched the video just to kind of get an idea of what the board was looking for. And when I watched it, I saw what the real concern was, is that particular developer was proposing some very nice apartments, but they were also then proposing, next to it, big, beautiful, custom houses. And it seemed like the board had consternation of those two uses together. A 12,000-square-foot lot with an $800,000 home on it next to an apartment. Now, I don't see those as being, that, those two uses being as synergistic and mutually beneficial as this product, the age-restricted, and then the apartments, when the apartments also provide that buffer, that transition from the commercial. So I see that they're going to be at the commercial, they're going to help support that. Hopefully, they'll bring the shops at Polo Club to fruition sooner, because once we get those rooftops, those residents, that activity, the excitement, maybe all of a sudden, eyes will be back on the shops at Polo Club. And then by the same token, a residential use adjacent to a residential use is also in perfect harmony from a land use perspective. So we hope that when we come back, we could prove out that difference and that distinction a little better, because certainly, we would agree with the assertion that an $800,000 house probably isn't in harmony with an apartment as, as this product would be.
Okay. Thank you.
I also understand, and again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but as you explained to staff previously, you were looking at having a height restriction on those apartment buildings as well to be a two-story unit.
Absolutely. Or reminding me. So two stories, which is much more consistent with the product that we're proposing as far as the senior component. I also heard on this board that there was consternation about the Lennar project in Naperville and that it was three stories and it looked imposing and out of character. And we agree, and we think the two-story product would, would enhance the overall aesthetics.
I have a, a couple of questions and then some comments. First question is maybe more for Jonathan. So there's a commercial area that's shown to the west of this project. Does that kind of match what we, the original design was for that area, the, the commercial to start, kind of where we're seeing it on this design?
Right. So the petitioners are not proposing any development of the commercial. This would be the, the residential to the east. They would be cooperating with those property owners to provide a utility corridor and/or an annexation corridor, so there'd be some participation. The concept plan that's shown here tonight is consistent with concepts that the board has seen in the past that would have the forty acres plus an additional, one intervening parcel for commercial, and then the concept plan here would pick up there. So it's consistent.
So the original size of the commercial is staying the same? Thank you. And I apologize. So is it age-restricted or age-targeted?
Definitely age-restricted. Covenant will be recorded in place, precluding anybody under 55 or children.
Thank you. And then you mentioned the, the conversation you had with Naperville to the north and that there might be some alternatives to satisfying. I guess the reason I'm asking is part of, you know, obviously, the concern is congestion always, and to say that if we're going to approve a project, I don't want it to necessarily eliminate what might be a, a connection road in the future. So could you maybe expand a little bit upon that conversation with Naperville?
Sure. So they're, they're, they're open to alternatives. And as I stated before, we think it's more or less related to getting vehicular, vehicles out of South Point, which is a Naperville community. But if you could see a point here.
You have to use the mic. I have the mic on. The smaller one.
The smaller one.
Horrible one on your right.
I, I'll just speak from here. So if you could see up in the adjacent Naperville community, there's a street that has a horrible name. It's like Hawk Week or Hawk, Hawk something. They would be open to potentially opening that up, but then I think that that might create some sort of... might create some sort of neighbor dispute, where we certainly don't want that traffic through our community, and vice versa. And then, adjacent to where we have our town home component, adjacent to the detention area, they were open to shifting a townhouse out, and then connecting down to one hundred and nineteenth Street. We don't think that makes a lot of sense from a land use perspective, because it isolates one important segment of the community. We also point to the fact that fifty-nine is a major regional arterial that moves traffic rather efficiently. And that's where we want the traffic, when they're going to drive by the commercial, and they're going to pull in. We don't necessarily want to bring them down to one hundred and nineteenth Street. And then, alternatively, to the east, Naperville Plainfield Road, as it connects to one hundred and nineteenth Street, is a highly efficient roadway as well. So, we think that the north-south arterials are in place to no longer justify the Book Road extension.
Okay. So, if I understand you, so you're saying the alternatives in your mind are not really practical, that you would not like to see that connectivity? Is that what you're saying?
That's correct. What I would propose, and what I propose to get South Point out, is maybe they make a right turn onto fifty-nine. And Brian, you're probably familiar with the Michigan left, and then they could modify that center median and, and get that turning movement. I think that that's a much less intrusive mechanism to accomplish their goal. But this is going to, we fully envision this can be a long process, and we're going to have time to hopefully work through that as well.
And maybe, I guess my comment on that would be, maybe is if you could, obviously, expand on that in the future as you come back, because what I wouldn't want to do is, is eliminate a road that might help ease some congestion in the future, that's all.
Absolutely.
Not that it would, but that's why, I guess, what I would be looking for.
But, well, and, and it's, to that point, it's not just a question of it, it being something that we want to make sure we address. It's actually part of our, it's part of our boundary agreement with the city of Naperville, which is why we directed Vince and Scott to meet with, with Naperville, is that there is a requirement within our boundary agreement that Book Road would actually extend down to one nineteenth. So, we have to make sure that that is satisfied and addressed before we can move forward. Otherwise, we violate our boundary agreement.
I, I guess, and then my, my comments are, I think I, I like the overall design or the idea behind the plan. I think we need housing diversity in our village. I know that some people are necessarily against multifamily, especially apartments. Having said that, though, I know that, I think Jonathan mentioned earlier in his report, that it started, this area is currently zoned for medium density. So, I think one of the other trustees mentioned that the concern maybe is not necessarily for the uses, but maybe for the density overall, when you start to look at the number of units. So, I guess I would ask that you maybe look at that and take a pencil and see if there's not something maybe reducing. I think, obviously, you know, part of this is sometimes some negotiation, why you'd like to do this, you know, what is actually possible, and, you know, is it a lower number would be beneficial. The other big thing, I think, from my perspective, is a phase commitment. And I don't know if that's the right terminology, but, you know, what I wouldn't want to see is, you know, the multifamily apartments go up, have that sold and flipped, and then you come back and say, well, we're not selling the, the seniors, so we need to change that to mult, to a single-family, not age-restricted, and the whole concept then changes, but the apartments are built. So, have some kind of a commitment in the, the agreement that maybe the apartments couldn't start, at least until a certain percentage of the, uh, single-family, multifamily, age-restricted was completed, so that we know that, you know, you guys were fully committed to that part of the project. And then, obviously, the walking trail, I thought that was very positive. And then the last comment I would say is, I know it's a different community to the, to the north, but I think we still need to be good neighbors. And I would just say that landscaping would be an important component of that. Thank you.
Essentially outline what elementary, middle, and high schools, that's potential students that would be in the apartments would attend?
It falls in the east high school.
It would be most likely east JFK and either Eichelberger or Liberty Elementary off of Essington. So, the schools that would, it would be the schools along Essington Road there.
And then the other, another great aspect, obviously, the senior component is not going to produce any children. But, the benefit of this development is the school district gets to be the recipient of a full tax bill. So, it's definitely going to be a revenue-positive experience for the school district. Based upon the student generation tables, we're looking at about thirty-two students from the multifamily component. When you look at what the tax bill is going to be on the total development, that's a win-win for the school district. And a very similar perspective from the Park District, we have very limited impact on them as well, but pay a full tax bill.
What kind of rent are you looking for out of the apartments?
Haven't got into the specifics where I'd be able to, to talk about that conclusively. I could talk about what tapestry is charging down the street, and we have some good ideas of what Continental on one hundred and twenty-seventh Street is getting, which, to my understanding, is the fastest-leasing community that Continental has ever done in the Midwest. Or in between there.
I concur with Trustee Benoches' concerns. And I, along with Trustee Peck, are not necessarily inclined to support apartments. The rest of the project looks wonderful. However, the apartment component kills the plan for me. It doesn't kill the, I mean, it doesn't, it's the, the drag on the whole plan. The rest of it looks absolutely beautiful to me. And I, I do agree, we need senior housing, but the apartments are a direct consternation for me.
With the, with the multifamily component, would we have a chance at, at getting your support? And if so, under what conditions?
I don't know yet. I'd have to look into it. I'd have to look into what you, I mean, you, you told me earlier that the, the two fifty-two number could not be pared down, because essentially, that's the economic driver for the project. And if that can't be pared down, then I don't know that you could get my support.
Do you have a, do you have a number in mind that would garner support?
At this time, no, I don't.
You know, I don't want to be contentious, but this is a, an initial presentation. This is the first I've ever seen of this material. Maybe other board members have, have discussed this with other people, but this is the first time I've seen it. So, it's really, I think we should keep an open mind to what is being done. Everybody has an opinion, and that's perfectly fine. But, I have one last question. You have developed, Hovanian has developed their Four Seasons projects, and they have thirty that are done. What we have in front of us are pictures that were produced for our benefit. They all look great, okay? The clubhouse looks great, the facilities look great. Do you have a website that has actual visual that we could look at, or anyone in the community could look at, to say, you know, this is what really exists? I'm not saying you're going to do a bait and switch, but oftentimes, that does occur. You'll, we'll see many individual representations that are very outstanding, but what we end up with isn't what we started with. And so, do you have a website? Do you have a facility that people could look at to say, this is an example of your product?
Very good question. Most of the marketing websites will have similar front elevation renderings to what was presented this evening. But I, what I can do is reach out to some of our divisions in other states, and try to get streetscape photos that are, are representative of what a full build-out might look like.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Hey, a comment, could I go back, you know, ten years, and we're originally looking at the shops for that quarter. And one of the things we had in mind was sort of a residential component of some sort in the area that you're talking about now. So, that's consistent. One of the reasons the one, the apartments on one hundred and twenty-seventh Street have done so well is it was an ideal location. There were three houses to the north. Everything else was either farmland around it or commercial. This is fairly well situated, too, for something like that. Right now, it's not interfering with a lot of homes. You've got the Naperville apartments, you can, you know, put a berm up there, take care of that. I think it fits in the overall design, the comprehensive plan that we had in mind. And I think if we put this in, we have a much better shot at getting the Polo, the corner developed commercially, which is what you suggested a while back. I, I agree. I think it would make a big difference, have that kind of density. And I think, you know, apartments, if they're done well, are not a problem, at least not in my opinion. I grew up in Evanston, which was, had a lot of apartments. Apartments were close, the setbacks were probably very close, too. So, none of that scares me, because I know it'll work. But, I think keeping it to two stories, making it fit into the rest of the community. And my opinion is, the most attractive part of your proposal is the fifty-five and older, single-family house, or that section. I think that's the market you're driving for. This other fills in the rest of the space, in a sense. So, I think, I'm not concerned about you going with that first, because I think that's where your demand is. Let's say, my neighbors are any indication, they're leaving town like mad to, to get to something like that. Love to see you putting something here, quality enterprise, if you will, and keep them here.
I don't know if any additional trustees had comments, but I, I just wanted to close briefly. If, if, I don't want to cut a trustee off, so if anyone...
I can finish up. I had one more apartment I'd like to add to the conversation with this. Some of the apartments that I saw successful in Naperville that are several years old, they're not just a year or two old, they're, you know, I'm sure over a decade old, fifteen years old. They typically have a high-end management company handle tenants. And part of the process is credit checks, criminal background checks for any of their tenants. And if some of their tenants do happen to get in trouble with the law, a lot of times they're actually asked to leave and are essentially evicted. Now, and I don't know what we can or cannot put in the annexation, I'm not an attorney, but I think it may be something that would be helpful for maybe some board members that have concerns about the apartments, to have some sort of a commitment that a high-end management company with some of those practices would, that could be in place, would be part of the plan.
Oh, we agree on that. So, all the upscale apartments are professionally managed, credit checks. You don't have people there because they have to be. They're renters by choice, they want to be. And if you look at a lot of their income, and I saw the data on the tapestry, there are people that the equivalent rent, they could support a payment on a three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand dollar house. So, we would want the same thing, too, because we have a vested interest in making sure that stays upscale, so then it complements the Four Seasons product as well. So, so I, that, that concept is something we agree with.
I have one quick question. If Book Road is to remain open, if the board sees that that fit that, what will it do to your project?
It would bifurcate the site, and essentially create one section that is isolated from the other. From a land use perspective, it would be a very negative occurrence. Not saying that it would mothball the project, but it would just be a bad fact pattern that we'd have to try and work around.
As you know, boards from the past worked through there, and that was the designation of that board, and also the boards of Naperville. And we work real hard for boundary agreements for all our neighbors. So, just as food for thought.
That is the driver of our concern. It's not just the, the expense of the Book Road extension. Our concern's a practical one, in that, you know, we're going to put a lot of effort into extending the DuPage River Trail through and adjacent to the site, where it's going to connect several miles to the north, several miles to the south. And the last thing we want to do is, is cut that off, bifurcate it, the way Vince suggested. And I really don't want to game a Frogger with our seniors crossing the road to get to what, you know, their open space amenity is going to draw them to.
Also, Vince, I hate the term "Michigan turn."
Michigan U. It's a great...
Well, thank you.
Well, yeah, Mayor, if I may, just, staff very much appreciates the, the feedback, the direct input from the trustees. I know the petitioner does. We have a full agenda tonight, and I also appreciate the, the village scheduling this. It's, helps the petitioner meet their, they have a due, due diligence timeline that they're working towards. So, we appreciate the feedback. I know we, we have some homework to do. Certainly, staff will distill the feedback from the board and, and coordinate with applicant to chart out a course from here. And any, you know, future action would, would directly address the Book Road issue as well. So, thank you.
Certainly appreciate your time and comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item on the agenda is special events.
Thank you. If you give us one moment to move around here a second, we'll get started. Thank you. Tonight, we would like to present a, an update regarding our special events that we host in town, as far as, and also some recommendations that we would like to recommend to the board as far as moving forward. Ken, next, are we ready to go with slides? Okay. The first slide in our presentation, and, and all the trustees should have a copy of this, is basically just highlighting some of the major events that we have in town throughout the course of the year. Now, this list is not all comprehensive. It does not include all the events that we have in town. For instance, it does not include block parties, community picnics, concerts in the park, things like that. You'll also notice on this list that cruise nights is listed as a single event, although we're aware that it occurs every Tuesday, for the most part, throughout the entire summer. Also on this list, we do have a couple of events up there that were a one-time event, per se, such as the twenty-five year tornado memorial, and the relics, relics of Saint Maria Goretty that were at Saint Mary's Church earlier, or, I'm sorry, later last year. But, for the most part, this is a, a comprehensive list of the larger events that we have in town, that requires either a dedication of personnel to actually work the event, or dedication of hours of either Commander Ruggles, or Sergeant Mullisack, or other planners within our special event committee to do planning on these events. Next slide, please, Ken. This slide here basically gives you a highlight of how our events have, for lack of a better term, exploded over the course of the last four years here in the Village of Plainfield. As you can see, our events, just in the last four years, have doubled in the number that we've hosted here in the Village of Plainfield. Next event, uh, next slide, Ken. This slide here basically highlights the costs that are associated, again, with the major events that we highlighted on the first page. For the most part, we do cover the cost. The village covers the cost for most of the events. There are a couple of events whereby, for instance, Plainfield Junior Cats, Lakeland's Fireworks, and the Saint Joe's VIP, and the, uh, Saint Joe's Open House, where we did actually come, come ahead in monies in those. That's basically because of the costs we, we put onto the event organizers to cover the use of squad cars, things, things along those lines. So, it is minimal cost to the event organizers. It does not cover salaries or anything like that. And in this number here, also no salary, salary personnel, such as myself, Commander Ruggles, or any of our other commanders, or even from Public Works and that, are covered in this special event cost. This is strictly officers, Public Works personnel, Pima, although they are volunteers, we do factor their costs in here as well. This slide basically shows, over the course of the last four years, the cost comparison by the departments. Unfortunately, there was no Public Works data available for twenty thirteen and fourteen, but throughout the remainder of the years, it does highlight the police department's costs, community service officers, although they're a part of the police department. We break them out separately, Public Works and also Pima. And again, Pima, those are volunteer hours, but we turn that into dollars, just to give you a sense of the cost of the village. And this slide basically shows you the costs versus how much payment we're actually receiving from the organizers. Generally, if you look across the board, we receive about ten percent of the total cost that the village has to put into the cost of these special events, again, through the use of police department, Public Works, and Pima. One of the slides, we do bring Pima out of the mix. So, you do have a, on the red bar there, that does show our costs without the use of Pima. But, again, generally, ten percent of the cost is what the, what we recover through the village, as far as the organizers paying back to the village. This slide here basically shows the manpower that we utilize for our bigger special events, again. You'll see that it's basically broken down into three different categories. One category being, for every event, we analyze how many personnel we need to either do a traffic checkpoint, be a foot security, whatever it may be for that respective event. And then we come up with a final number. Now, some of those numbers are covered by either the use, use of EMA personnel, through the use of community service officers, or again, through the use of police officers. Generally, our traffic checkpoints are covered by either community service officers or EMA personnel. Our foot patrol, for obvious reasons, in the event there is an issue, is typically handled by our patrol officers, in the event they have to take any type of enforcement action, or anything like that. or anything like that. Generally, for our bigger events, you will see that we have met or exceeded most of our manpower needs. And generally, when we exceed an event, it's typically because we have more EMA personnel come out than we generally had, I shouldn't say budgeted, that we had factored in, because it is a popular event for them, such as the Wounded Warrior 5K, the fireworks, things where they can generally even maybe bring their kids with them, as long as obviously somebody else is watching while they're doing their work. But there are some events that we did fall short on, and there is no easy way to put this, the number of events we have really does put a strain on our emergency management personnel. Their primary mission in this village is to provide emergency preparedness and emergency response capabilities for a number of critical incidents that we have in town, working with the fire department, the police department, and so forth. However, over the course of the years, we have factored them in into these special events going back ten, fifteen-plus years. However, because the number of special events have, has continued to rise every year, and we do seek their assistance, for lack of a better term, by the end of the summer, they're starting to get burnt out, and we're seeing less and less participation by our EMA personnel. And we're either having to find some type of alternative to maybe cover a traffic checkpoint, or we're having to look for, bring additional CSOs on, or quite frankly, in some instances, we just leave that post unattended. We don't leave critical posts unattended, but there are some other posts that we can throw some extra barricades up and things like that. It is by no means optimal, but it is what we have to do to get through these respective This slide here basically breaks it down to the big five. What I should have started out with, over the course of all these special events, if we've broken these special events basically down into three categories, I should say four categories. As I mentioned, we do have special events such as block parties, concerts in the park, community picnics, things like that, that really just require us communicating with either village hall personnel, organizers, signing the permit slip, and they're good to go. The remainder of those events that we highlighted on page one, we basically broke down into three categories. We broke down to the big five, and what we consider the big five are what you're seeing highlighted here. That would be the Irish Parade and the Homecoming Parade. It would also be the Plainfield Fest. It would also be the Cruise Nights. Again, we have it listed as one event, but we know that's throughout the entire summer. And it's also the Patriotic Picnic and Fireworks Show. Those five events require the largest amount of manpower for either that single-day event or multiple-day event for all the events we have. And then the other category that we've broken our events down to are our 5Ks and 10Ks. We've seen, again, we've seen these numbers go up exponentially as far as the number of 5Ks and 10Ks we've had in town. The reason I'm breaking these up into categories is, as we get towards the end of the presentation, we have some recommendations we would like to present to the board. And then again, there are some events on here that, although they don't require just a permit be inside, they do require some personnel, we're able to work those events with either on-duty personnel, or adjusting some shifts, things like that. So, it doesn't really require much, if any, overtime, or the use of additional personnel being brought out, or things like that. This is a very busy slide. What we did is, we contacted several communities around us to see how they basically handle special events. We actually looked at several other categories, but I would probably be here for the next three hours talking about all the categories that we highlighted. So, we basically broke it down into these five categories. The number of events a community may have, their application process, or do they require an application? Do they require fees for services? And if so, how is that done? How is the application reviewed? And what is the final approval process? I'm going to jump down to application review first, because that's going to be the easiest one to talk about. As you can see, for the, for most of the communities around us, they're either, most of the applications are approved just by committee. We do it, or the application review, I should say, they do it by committee. Here in Plainfield, we do have a committee made up of fire personnel, police personnel, that being Commander Ruggles or Sergeant Mullisack, village, in some instances, the planning department, Public Works is definitely there, and other village personnel and non-governmental entities. Obviously, the event organizers may be present in some of the meetings as well, as we work through the application process. Now, some of these events that we've had for years and years, such as Plainfield Fest, the Homecoming Parade, most, we've been doing this for so many years, most of those meetings are actually through the use of emails. We probably have minimal meetings as the date grows closer to the event. But some of the newer events that we're seeing pop up every year, we have to have an initial meeting with the folks that are organizing it. And quite frankly, many of the people come to these meetings having no idea what the requirements are that go into putting an event on in the Village of Plainfield. We've had events where they'll show up on a Thursday, contact us on a Thursday, and they're expecting to do a 5K on Saturday. Well, it doesn't work that way. So, there is a learning curve. We have it posted on our websites and everything available to them, but for whatever reason, we still do get those events where we do have, we get late-minute notices, but those newer events where we have to physically sit down with the organizers several times to help work them through the process. Going back up to the top, the number of events, as you can see, it's kind of all over the board. Obviously, it's driven by the population of that community, and some other intangibles, as far as cost potentially, things like that. And as far as the number, like I said, for instance, Oswego, as I mentioned, we don't really count block parties, concerts in the park, things like that. Oswego does count those into their total numbers, so they have a very large number of special events. Yorkville has a very small number of special events, so really, when we did an analysis with surrounding communities, it was really all over the board as opposed, as compared to the number of special events that we host in our community. The application process is pretty similar across the board. For the most part, everybody requires some type of application to hold a special event. We do take it one step further. We do have an open-air permit and a loudspeaker permit, if that's what their event would require. But for the most part, everybody has to apply in these communities if they want to host a special event. They can't just show up and have their event. Fees for services, again, in some instances, it is kind of across the board. In some instances, the rates are charged both by the police department and Public Works. In some instances, they're not charged at all. Some of these communities have municipal fire departments, so those are factored into it. And some of the instances, there's, well, in one of the instances, they actually have the volunteers do traffic control and things like that, which I absolutely would not advocate because I would really not be comfortable with volunteers that don't know what they're doing doing traffic control. But that's what that community elects to do, so there obviously is no fees for police services. And one of the unique things we have here in Plainfield that we talk about on a pretty regular basis, is we do have a very active EMA here in Plainfield. There's only one other community I can think around here, that being Romeoville, that has a very similar active emergency management agency that they utilize for special events. Most of these other communities that we surveyed have little to no emergency management personnel that they can bring out. So again, any critical positions that they have to fill, either traffic control or whatever, has to be filled by police department personnel. So that's additional cost that they may incur. And the final approval, again, this is kind of all over the board. In some instances, it's the mayor. In our instance, obviously, it's the village board approval. Some of them, finance department, they, some communities that are bigger, have a special events coordinator that has the final say as far as whether an event goes on or doesn't go on. So, with this busy slide, really to summarize this one particular slide, it's really all over the board, as far as what communities do, what communities don't do. I will tell you, if you do look at the fees for services, though, for the most part, everybody, as long as, with few exceptions, there is some type of charge for special events. Mainly for the police department's use, either for whether they're doing traffic control checkpoints, or actual foot patrols for their respective event. But the police department, for the most part, does charge a fee for whatever services they have to provide for that respective event that they're working. And this next slide basically just gives you a rundown of the earnings and the expenses by the major organizers, or the major event organizers that we have. Now, we did try to get figures from all the events that we have up there. Unfortunately, we didn't get figures from all of them. We will continue to work to try to do that. But as you can see, most of the events that did return some numbers, did have, did come out positive, with the exception of the Patriotic Picnic. They take a pretty significant hit every year, mainly because of the fireworks show and the cost of that around the Fourth of July. At this point, we would like to present some recommendations to the village board, moving forward with our events. As I mentioned earlier, we basically broke these down into three categories. The first, the three different categories. For the smaller local events, we basically feel that the services that are being rendered are already being paid for within the village. It's very minimal. Again, it may just involve us moving personnel around time shifts, or using on-duty personnel to work that event. So, there's minimal of any cost. So, we're not looking to add any fees to these events, or any increased cost to the village. Our larger community events, such as the parade and Cruise Nights, are supplemented by the TIF monies. Patriotic Picnic is a shared cost between the Park District, the Fire District, the Village, and the School District. And Plainfield Fest, I'm going to talk about a little bit here separately. So our larger community events, four out of our big five, if you will, we're not looking to make any changes, and that would, again, would be our two parades, that would be Cruise Nights, and that would be the Patriotic Picnic, and the fireworks. For Plainfield Fest, for lack of a better term, there's some changes that may be coming down the road. Most notably is the Old Fire Station that's located on this plain street. There is a bid into that station, and whether that bid goes through this time, or somewhere down the road, obviously, we're all aware that the fire department is actively trying to sell that building. And as part of the layout for Plainfield Fest, that parking lot next to the fire department is a significant piece of that beer tent that they operate. It was a great success when they moved the beer tent from the parking lot behind Andreessen's to the fire department. It, I would say, doubled in some nights, two and a half times the size of the entertainment and the people that were getting in the beer tent. So it was an absolutely great success, and it was actually easier to manage, law enforcement-wise, when they opened up that event. But unfortunately, like I said, if the fire department property is sold, that will reduce that beer tent area in itself, probably at least half in size, because they won't have that parking lot next to the fire department anymore. So that's a huge intangible that's still kind of hanging out there. And the other issue we have with Plainfield Fest is really the congregation of the carnival rides, and the teenagers, lack of a better way, is the teenagers congregating there. We've done a very good job with the organizers of Plainfield Fest to make sure there hasn't been any major issues there, but quite frankly, every year, it scares me because of how many people we are shoving into a very small area. I can tell you, on the beautiful nights, the popular nights, we probably have fifteen-hundred kids shoved in one street corner around those carnival rides. And it would really be a great benefit if we could find a way to expand that, to let them breathe a little bit more, so they're not shoulder-to-shoulder on top of each other. So again, Plainfield Fest, I'm going to leave that out of the mix, because again, there are some intangibles that are going on with Plainfield Fest moving in the future. With our 5K and our fundraiser events, we would be seeking these events to be charged a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee. Now, in one of the previous slides, I should have pointed out, for most of our 5Ks, they raise enough money for their event, but not nearly enough to cover the expenses of what we put in as far as community service officers, and in some events, police officers. And again, Pima is a volunteer resource. A couple of our 5K events, though, are very, very large and successful. That being the Harvest 5K, which is the biggest, or I'm sorry, the oldest 5K that we have in town, going on eighteen years now, or something like that? Sixteen years. Sixteen years, so it's our oldest event in town. And then the Wounded Warrior 5K, which recently came to us about four or five years ago. Both of these events have in excess of a thousand people running in them, approaching fifteen-hundred people. And they both do donate back to the village, cover some of the costs. The Harvest 5K does expand some of their donations to many other organizations around the village. And obviously, the Wounded Warrior 5K donates back to the Wounded Warrior Project with the injured military folks. But for the 5Ks and 10Ks and any other race event we have in town, we would be seeking the board's recommendation to start charging those entities twenty-five-hundred dollars for their 5K events. Basically, based on our figures, two thousand dollars would cover police and Public Works working those events, and then five hundred dollars would go as a donation to Plainfield EMA for the personnel that they come out. Although they are not paid, we do have an incentive account where we take money out of that to buy them things such as traffic vests, other traffic safety devices. We've purchased other safety devices for severe weather and things like that out of those incentive accounts that maybe aren't always covered by the budget. So, we would look to do that with the twenty-five-hundred fee that we would look to charge to the 5K and 10Ks. And that is a quick overview of our special events. I would be happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Before you take any questions, I just want to add a little bit into how we came to that twenty-five-hundred-dollar figure for the 5K events. We took a look at all of the different events that we do, all the different 5Ks, and took a look at what those expenses are. And generally speaking, they fall right around twenty-five-hundred dollars. Some are a little bit more than that, some are a little bit less than that. We had a chance to sit down with Tasha at the chamber as well, because she's the lead with regard to the 5K, the Harvest Fest 5K, and they are already making a twenty-five-hundred-dollar donation. It goes directly to Pima, so for them, there's, this is not an additional cost, it's just we'll be booking it differently on our end. So that's largely how we came to understand that number. As we took to where our neighbors are, if you take a look back at that sheet, they charge essentially what the officer rate is. As you know, that's a contract rate that we have. If we are to apply that contract rate, the price actually comes to something around four thousand dollars. So we are looking to provide still a community benefit, if you will, for those events happening within our community. But largely, it's a, that's, still made a good sense on how we came to that number. It was a good average to where we were on different events. With regard to the smaller events as well, that Chief was mentioning, as he said, they don't cost us a lot of money. That being said as well, a number of those organizations are actually charged that officer rate that's established within our union contracts. The Lakeland's Fireworks Show, for example, is one that stands out, and there are a couple of other events that happen throughout the year where we actually charge them that rate. Saint Mary's, when they had their special event, we charged them that rate as well. So that's largely how we came to it. The large community events, if you don't mind, just I'll offer some additional insight as to where we're at on that thinking. The Cruise Nights and the two parades that happen in the downtown area, we are, we do benefit by having the TIF district. The TIF district does allow for us to use funds where, to pay for costs where we are directly promoting the downtown. And the Patriotic Picnic, I'm sorry, the, those three events that happen within the confines of the, and corporate limits of the TIF, really aren't fundraisers for any particular organization. They are more community-oriented in nature. So while the TIF still is in place, it is something that we do have that luxury and benefit, so that's staff's recommendation. If the board has a different opinion as to what we should be doing with that, by all means, this is, again, just a recommendation on our part. The Patriotic Picnic was something that was set up with the Park District, and the Fire District, and the School District, and ourselves, and it's a huge money loser, largely because of those fireworks show. But again, that was something that we thought was worthwhile to continue that relationship. As you know, we spend about four thousand dollars directly toward the cost of those fireworks annually. With regard to the Plainfield Fest itself, and where this becomes a little bit of a trick bag for us, and the conversations that we've had with Rob, I think have been pretty successful and pretty worthwhile, is while the festival takes place within the corporate limits of the TIF, I can't use TIF funds to offset those costs, because the, well, frankly, it is a fundraiser, and those funds then go to be used outside the corporate limits of the TIF. To make matters even more challenging is the village... To make matters even more challenging is the Village of Plainfield is the direct beneficiary to property that we set up. And we actually helped to create the foundation. It is, in essence, a subdivision of us. So it becomes a very hard and challenging thing to ask us to use those TIF funds, to redirect them to be used toward covering the cost of essentially another political subdivision of ours. What we did have, we had a nice conversation about the possibility of exploring alternative locations. The downtown area, as Chief Conapek pointed out, is a very challenging place for him to staff. Besides the ten pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag, there are a lot of nooks and crannies, which is what leads to a lot of additional staffing. We did explore the possibility of relocating the, the festival to Central High School and Fort Beggs. And as we explored that, it really looks as though we can cut the cost that we incur from about thirty-five thousand dollars to somewhere between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars. The discussions that we had with Rob were that if it's something that they'd like to do, to explore, to move it down to Fort Beggs, certainly, we could probably put a cap this year at fifteen thousand dollars. And, and then work with them on coming up with alternatives on how we could possibly keep those costs down for them and see if it works. You know, if it doesn't work and they're finding that they would have greater value and greater return on their investment by being in that downtown area, certainly, we'll continue to explore ways to value engineer what those costs are. But those are still direct costs that, that we, we incur and that we would, we would, we would recommend remuneration for those costs. So that's kind of the additional conversations that we've had that, if you don't mind me adding my additional two pieces to it. So with that, open it for conversation.
I'm clarify, how many years are left in our downtown TIF?
The TIF expires in 2023, correct?
So in the 2022, the board members should maybe start talking about how they're going to fund the downtown events.
Well, we've been having that conversation actually beyond just with what happens with the special events as well. What happens with snow removal, what happens with maintenance of parking and all that other fun stuff. It, it's a very challenging question that will come up when that goes to expire. We'll need a couple of years to actually have those conversations, correct?
That's definitely a good thing. There is a lot of work put into this and by half of our staff and Police Department. The, you know, cost sharing with, you know, Park District, Fire Village for the patriotic picnic, I think is a, you know, a great idea. And it's definitely an event that I'd like to see continue to, to go on in Plainfield. I am glad that we're working with the Chamber as well as the Wounded Warrior Event as well and keeping as-is with those two organizations. Then in regards to Plainfield Fest, I did clarify at our budget meeting that if TIF funds were not going to be available, which it looks like they may not, that we would have the money in our corporate fund to continue as-is with that organization, that event. And that's essentially the direction that I feel that that should go. I'm one person up here, it's not all my decision, but that's where I'd like to see it go. I'd like to see that event continue in downtown Plainfield. I believe it's a value add to the businesses to have that event stay downtown if any way possible. Then in addition, if there's any other comments or information that staff has to follow up after we go over this tonight, I'd be happy to look at that as well if there's other options. And, and believe me, those, those events in downtown Plainfield, I believe are important again, like I said, for our businesses, our residents. And, you know, we're looking at about a hundred thousand dollars that we're spending annually on these events. When I first arrived on this Village Board in 2009, we were shortly after looking at laying off, and we did, several employees. It was, can you give me a quantity, Brian? Because I think you were the one that...
Yeah, I, I had the displeasure of laying off thirty-six, we riffed forty-one employees.
And during that same time, we as a board were conservative and we looked at a lot of the different expenditures we had, and we made our necessary cuts. We looked at donations going to Plainfield Choir, Plainfield Art League, I believe both of them got five thousand dollars a year. Plainfield TV Group, who are Never Let Me Live It Down, we gave them twenty thousand dollars a year, and we cut that because we had employees we were laying off. Right now, we're in a position where we're not contracting, we're expanding, okay? We're looking at an Economic Development Director, we've brought in two new officers. It's my opinion that if staff has said we have the money in the corporate fund to fund the fest as-is, then I think we should continue to do so. Thank you.
My, here's a question that I, let me pose back if you don't mind. With regard to Plainfield Fest and, and the circumstances there, what are your thoughts then as it relates to the 5Ks? Are you comfortable with the, the, the idea of us charging for the 5K events?
As long as the current expenditure is left in place at the Chamber and the Wounded Warriors are paying, then I'm okay with looking at the other dozens of 5Ks that have recently come about. And, you know, as Chief had said, it was multiplied by how much, we have four times amount of 5Ks now, or what was the...
Our special events overall have multiplied by four times. But the vast majority of them have been a number of 5Ks that have come in, yes.
Right, and, and again, 5Ks, you know, like you said, there's a lot of planning. They can't show up on Thursday and want to run it on Saturday. And, you know, I've gone over different ideas on saving, you know, saving money. And a lot of those different ideas would probably essentially by virtue, the individuals would maybe not necessarily want to have those events here if we took some of those measures. So I do support essentially leaving as-is for the Chamber and then the 5K for the Wounded Warriors. Then moving forward with staff's recommendation on the remainder.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke. Our, our events have doubled, not four times, they've doubled in those last four years.
Okay, doubled in four years versus four, I got it, okay, thank you.
My concern with the, the twenty-five-hundred-dollar charges, not so much with the organizations that are currently up and running. It's the, the new organizations that are maybe new charities that are trying to get something off the ground. And I think twenty-five-hundred dollars is a major impediment to a brand-new charity. I'd like to see something like maybe a sliding scale for the first year, maybe be five hundred, seven hundred fifty. And then maybe the second or third year when they're established, then it'll go up to the, the twenty-five-hundred-dollar cap or whatever the, the board thinks is right. But the new charities, I think that's an, an onerous burden on somebody just trying to start something up for a good cause.
Truth be told, our biggest costs are on those first year and second years of those events. We spent a lot of staff time and a lot of handholding on, on those first couple of years. That's actually our, our bigger challenges are on the first couple of years of those, of those events, just something to keep in mind.
I understand the point about the hurdle and it might impede it, but I guess from my point of view, I'd rather see the twenty-five-hundred. Most of the new ones are all very small, very focused. The Harvest Fort 5K, the Wounded Warrior are much more general, if you will. A lot of these other, you know, specific to Track Team or St. Mary's Church or whatever they are. And if they can't make more money than it takes for us to support it, I think they ought to look for a different way to raise funds that doesn't require the village to contribute. My problem with Plainfield Fest too is that it's like we're making a contribution, the village is making a conscious decision to say, okay, we'll give you twenty-five-hundred bucks. For them, for Plainfield Fest, is we're giving them thirty thousand dollars, and that, that has some problems, if you will. And Mr. Apple, I'd like to, I'd like to actually see your paper write up too, because I think somewhere along the line you said the whole idea of our master plan will disintegrate if we start charging you for the services. So maybe I misunderstood what you said, so I'd like to see it. But I, I fail to understand why Riverfront will disappear if we suddenly charge for Plainfield Fest. But that's a separate point, we'll reach, talk about that later, I think. But I like the idea of the hurdle, the twenty-five-hundred. I think we need to maybe, I'd personally, personally like to see us stop at maybe twenty events. You know, the, the some that are public service that generally serve the community as a whole, I think that's an excellent thing. We ought to be supporting that, the Patriot fireworks, all that sort of stuff, yeah. And the Homecoming Parade, you know, they don't benefit anybody particularly except the people who love to go out and watch them, Irish parade too. But the other events that are very specifically focused on generating money for a small group, I think we ought to have a hurdle there so that we don't put a load on ourselves. Unless we said, that's a charity we want to contribute to. And I don't think we're ready to do that. Those kind of decisions don't come to us usually. So I, I'd like to see us maybe consider a limit, one way to limit things is to put a hurdle there. So people actually do look for a different way of fundraising other than 5Ks. That's the hot thing, you know, we got tracks, hey, let's go out and run a 5K. Hey, it doesn't cost us anything, we'll just sign out a brochure and get a few people to run. It does cost, a lot of effort from staff point of view too. And I just assume, I don't have no problem, people want to do it if they can make it worthwhile. But it shouldn't cost us to make it worthwhile for them, is my point, so. But Plainfield Fest, I think we need to take a look at the things which have been said, it's considered a special event, if you will. If it especially leaves downtown, you know, it's, what is its impact? If we have a problem, if it's mainly the teenagers downtown, there's an awful lot of them, which there are. It's maybe the one event, but is that really what we want our downtown to be, a destination for teenage party? Maybe it is, but I submit that I don't think that's our prestige of our downtown. I don't think that helps our businesses down there particularly. And, you know, it's a, it's a nice, fun, people like to go, and good weather, it's delightful type thing. But if it goes someplace else, Central High School, Riverfront property, it may change the event to something different. I'm not sure the kids will hang around, you know, the carousel there, if you will. They might hang around a street corner, but they may not, but young kids like the carousels, things like that. So it depends on who we're trying to appeal to, so.
I think we're trying to appeal to families, yeah.
Kids are part of that. I mean, that's what you want there. You want, you want to draw the families in, and some of the families have the teenage kids. I, I understand the Chief's point and the congregation, and if something bad were to happen, it could get, it could get bad with the, the confines of the people. But we have fifty-some odd acres up north, is there, is there a possible way to look at that?
You know, I don't know if we're on target for what Chief Conapek and Commander Ruggles and your entire department put forth with this particular action, your schedule of events and your breakdown of finances. I know the public doesn't have access to these particular items. But if I look at special events costs, the Village of Plainfield is ninety-six thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seven cents in the red. That is not the, the black, it's in the red. I have, I spoke with individuals and they said, I don't go to half of these events, why am I paying for them? What I'm saying, and I have said it in the past, and I know it's a rather harsh and jaundice if one could possibly say so. I feel that if someone wants an organized event, pay for it. It's plain and simple, just pay for it. I want to have a 5K race, okay, pay our expenses. I want to have a fest, pay our expenses. For example, if I could give you a very basic analogy, I want to go to a good restaurant. I'll pick one of the good restaurants in downtown Plainfield. I eat and then I tell the owner, I can only pay thirty percent of the bill. Oh, that's perfectly fine, Mr. Rassess, you go ahead and leave. And that's exactly what we're doing. I'll just say, hey, the Village of Plainfield is profiting by me being in that restaurant and supporting it. You're open right now because of that. Well, I don't think it would carry, and I feel strongly, and I'm going to say it again, if you can't pay for the item, don't have it. Is that simple? We cannot continue in these harsh times to pick up everyone else's bill. I know it's only a hundred thousand dollars, but it's a hundred thousand dollars. And I thought a real viable point that Chief Conapek said, the burnout of Pima workers. They're expect, not expected, but they donate time continually. By, and it becomes ingratiating after a while to simply continue to donate time, donate time, donate time. It does wear on people, the volunteerism only can go so far. So what I'm saying, and I will not bereave it forever, pay the bill and I'll support it. Thank you.
Keith, can you confirm the numbers just so we understand what exactly we're looking at or talking about? So if I read this correctly, the total includes a Pima estimate, which really isn't a cost to the village, correct?
Which page are you on, trustee?
I'm on page, I don't know, two thousand and fifteen special event cost. I don't know if there's a page number.
Okay, yes, sir.
And so basically, the total there is a hundred and seventy-three oh five, right, before build? Down there at the bottom, total? Hundred and seven, right, three oh five before build?
Hundred, hundred and seven, yes.
Yes, so, but that includes twenty-three, five forty-nine from Pima, which is not an actual cost, correct?
That is correct.
So if we take off the twenty-three, five forty-nine, I think it brings us down to eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three, minus the ten, six, five, six build. The total is really seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seven, I believe, correct?
That's correct.
Just so we're on the same page, because I think this number, a hundred thousand, gets thrown out there all the time, and it's, it's really not. It's really seventy-three thousand, which is maybe close, but not really, twenty-five percent less almost than a hundred thousand, so. My concern, I don't have a problem with events paying some kind of a threshold, I think twenty-five hundred, if that's what staff is recommending. I think that's fine. I think, from my perspective, I think we have to be or should be consistent. So in other words, just because an event might be successful and make money, I don't know that that necessarily means that they should pay more because somebody else wasn't as organized and, and didn't attract as many residents or other users or donations or whatever else. So having that twenty-five-hundred dollars as a minimum, I think is a good idea. If we wanted to go above that and maybe say, okay, minimum of twenty-five, depending on the additional costs, maybe the organizers have to pay another ten or fifteen percent or twenty percent, whatever number is realistic towards that. As far as moving, I know there's been conversations, and I don't know that I want to get into, but I'll voice my two cents. I, moving Plainfield Fest, I know there might be some benefits, it sounds like, but I also think there's benefits to keeping it downtown. And I guess I would look really for input more from maybe the business owners and get their thoughts as to whether they would like that to kind of stay around or whether that would go rather than us as a village forcing that, forcing them to a different venue.
Well, again, I, I want to be clear, there was no point of us forcing this to be a different venue. It's just thirty-five thousand dollars to have the event is our cost to have it downtown. As we looked at the numbers, we expected to be somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars if it weren't in the downtown area. This isn't a question of us forcing anybody out of any, any venue or anything else to that matter. You know, and again, remember, this is a public, this is a subdivision of us that we're talking about. You know, this is our organization that was created to benefit our property. So again, it's a question of how we're moving money from one area to another area within your organization. So again, it's just a question of how you want to manage those costs.
I, I have a problem with the Pima being considered a zero value. They have a function, when we have emergencies and so on, we want to call them out. And as I recall, Pima at one time was seventy-some, it's now down under forty. Am I right in the numbers?
As far as the number of personnel?
Number of pers...
Actually, we were up to around forty, and we're down to about twenty to twenty-five right now.
We're, we're losing a valuable resource in my mind, so I, I don't want to wipe out the cost of that because the effort that they're putting in is part of the reason we get diminishing resources. It's an extremely valuable resource, and we need them. Floods, things like that, I think it's irreplaceable because they do a fantastic job all hours of the night, they're out blocking off roads. Now, that's what we want them for, search and rescue. We want them really to spend time, you know, watching over events. I'd rather have them do the important things, which they're trained for, they get a lot of training.
Just for clarity, I don't believe I said there wasn't value to Pima, what I believe I said...
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
And then, and the chart says cost, it's not an actual cost.
No, I understand, but you took it out and said, okay, the real cost is such and such. But I'm saying there is a penalty of Pima for doing this. And, you know, as Chief just said, from forty down to twenty-five. We're lost, we're losing a resource that we pay very little for, but they're fabulously important.
Right, and, and I understand Chief's position in that we're probably bringing them out. So I would guess that maybe with the twenty-five-hundred dollar threshold and maybe even adding a percentage above that, might get to a point where some of these organizations stop applying, which would reduce that threshold maybe naturally just because of that. And maybe this is a good starting point and then see where it goes after the first year.
I support the, I'd like to see a hurdle for all these things coming in, make it difficult.
If I, if I may add, I, I agree with both your, your trustees' point. If I could add one thing though, if, if we do take the entire cost of Pima out and take Pima out of the mix completely, in many instances, we would have to replace them with paid personnel, either CSOs or police officers. So it may not be the twenty-five, twenty, twenty-three thousand and change, but I can tell you, it would still be a significant cost that we would have to replace them with other personnel that would be, would be being paid.
Right, but they are still part of the equation, they are volunteers, correct?
That's correct.
Also, you have to remember, too, that they're there every Tuesday from June till September, plus all the regular call-outs, plus the expanded responsibility during Plainfield Fest. So, and they get very little. They get uniforms and they might get a banquet a year as a reward, and other than that, nothing. So it's to, to bring up that they're, they're not valued or worth.
I, see, that's good. I never, I never said they're not valued and there is not a value to that. That's not what I, the only point that I was trying to make was the cost. There's not an actual cost. We don't write an actual check to cover their, their labor, their attendance at these events. That's my only point. Please don't say that I don't value what Pima does, because that's not true at all.
I think that there's a misunderstanding here. What I think, the way I understood it, trustee O'Rourke was going over, was the pure financial reporting of volunteers. If we look at the books of any nonprofit, they're not going to have volunteers for Plainfield Fest. It costs us ten thousand dollars this year because we'd have to pay somebody else if they didn't do it. I think the, essentially, the optics that he was going through was essentially financial reporting. I agree with what he said, and I agree with what the chief and everyone else is saying, that we value Pima, and it would probably cost us money, but I think he was just essentially saying the way it's being reported is not financially accurate, okay? And I think we're all on the same page. Thanks.
And I think it opens up the bigger discussion, as chief said. If they're getting to a point where it is a burnout, then maybe we transfer some of that to the police and pay the overtime or whatever the rate is, or calculate that, and then say, okay, maybe that's where that other percentage on top of the twenty-five hundred comes in. To say fair across the board, whether it's ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever that number is, whatever the cost is from the village, it's a twenty-five hundred plus, this percentage. And, and part of that maybe enables us to use less Pima and more officers.
Chief, if I could, could I just ask a quick question? Officers off-duty and called in for special details, they would charge a rate of what, sir?
It depends on how much notice we have before the special event. If we get enough notice, I believe it's forty-seven, fifty an hour. But if we get less notice, it's written in their contract that, including like the patriotic picnic and fireworks show, that's considered a holiday for the village. So there, there, I believe there, certain holidays, it's a much higher amount. But it depends on how much notice we get for the special event, but at the minimum, it would be forty-seven, fifty per hour. And if I could just add, the numbers we used for Pima is the national volunteer rate, which is?
It's twenty-four seventy-two currently for the state of Illinois. That's where that number comes from. That's an hourly rate per volunteer hour as established by Private Sector, which is an organization that rates volunteers in every state of the country. That has been the number we have used to report Pima hours and values of hours as volunteers to the village for many, many years. It's been over ten years that we've used that number as a published, recommended number to rate a volunteer to any organization. So that's where that number comes from. And the forty-seven fifty, as chief mentioned, that is what the officers are paid. The village actually charges a fee above that to cover gas, insurance, et cetera. So the minimum rate that we charge, special detail-wise, to an organizer is fifty dollars, and that's only to a nonprofit. It goes up from there. If it is a, an organization that is not qualified as a nonprofit, it's a higher rate. If it's on a holiday, it's a higher rate. If they don't provide us with sufficient notice where we have to force our personnel in, it's a higher rate. So it's actually fifty dollars an hour is the bare minimum that we charge for any officer to be called in for a special. If it's actually overtime, then you're looking at a much higher rate than fifty dollars an hour for their contract.
I think one thing to look at, too, is the officers and the Pima people. I don't want to overtax either department. I mean, they have lives, too. They can't be at work every weekend throughout the whole summer. And just looking at a purely financial aspect, I think you have to look at the human aspect as well. I wouldn't want to put all of the burden on Pima or all of the burden on the police officers either. I think there has to be a equilibrium that we have to reach. And I, I am in support of the twenty-five hundred dollars as to offset the financial cost, but I think we have to also watch our people cost, too.
You know, I have to make a switch for a second, and I always say for every face, there's an obverse. And the obverse in my, I said that we have to have groups pay for things. But, you know, a point this board, I don't know, we should think about. What value culturally do all of these events have for the Village of Plainfield? Are they worth, in my estimation, close to a hundred thousand dollars a year in village expenditures? That's a philosophical thing that every member on this board has to include in their response. Is it worth it? Is the Plainfield Fest worth it? Is, you know, the holiday fest, all the runs, everything that we pay for, are they worth it? What would Plainfield be without them? You know, we take a hundred thousand dollars and spend it on the intersection that no one even realizes much was done to it. What value are we receiving from the money that the Village of Plainfield expends? And like I say, culturally, there's a great benefit. I'm not saying, you know, philosophically, great culture, but at least the fests and the car presentations are valuable. And so we have to value that particular thing, should we spend the money. Think about it. I know we don't have to make a decision tonight because we can't vote on a decision tonight. Thank you.
Can I, can I just jump in since, since there's, you know, my chance here? Thank you. You know, I've been in this town over twenty years. I've loved the events in downtown. Downtown itself, even before it was fixed, is just a real special, unique feature for us. We, every community has their niche. Other ones have different festivals, different types of festivals. Our parades and our downtown-based things are very important because I think that's what separates Plainfield from other communities. I love the fest being downtown. Things may make that change that are beyond everyone on the board's control as far as the actual Plainfield Fest going forward, the sale, possible sale of the fire station. Excuse me, but I would, I would love to see it stay. Looking at this year, I'd love to see it stay there. I'd love to see us work through this for this year, at least, to move forward as far as, you know, the cost of it. Excuse me, as far as the parades, they're fantastic, and I do think that's a huge community event. I think it brings the focus on Plainfield. I've said before, when you go to a restaurant, and it's great when you know everybody, but it's even better when you don't because that means that people are finding their way here. And that's always good for our stores and our businesses throughout the community. And, and some of the newer subdivisions coming in because then they sponsor it, and people see that this great community is someplace great to live. You just heard about a place tonight. All those things help that whole effort. As far as some of the 5Ks and that, I think we do need to look at that. We need to scale those, and for a couple of reasons, because, yes, they're great fundraisers for people. I've done a lot of fundraisers, and I know when you can find that unique thing that works, it's great. I know what the impact is on, on the services when you shut down a street. I know firsthand how nasty it gets when the residents aren't happy about the fact that you shut down that street. So I think we really need to look at those very closely because if we keep adding those, it's just going to get worse. And I know firsthand as well that many of the Pima people have been challenged a lot when the street gets shut down for 5K or something like that. People are angry when they want to get out, and they start to do ridiculous things with their vehicles. I think that the niche of the fest in the downtown is, is just fantastic. I've worked on it with these fine people over there. And I would say moving forward for this year, I'd like to keep things as they are, help support it, and then let's just see where we land. It may be an issue if the fire department sold. I don't know what the feasibility would be for it to stay in the downtown area.
Though, I just want to be sure I'm, I'm clear in hearing you. What you're saying is, as well, you'd rather that we not charge that event this year as we wait to see what happens with the fire district building is out.
Yes, that's my recommendation.
Trustee, are you finished?
I am done, sorry. Go ahead.
I want to respond to trustee Rassich's comments. Essentially, what's happening tonight, you are correct, we're not voting, but staff is looking for direction, essentially, from each and every one of us.
That was obvious.
Yeah, it is obvious, trustees. So thanks for interrupting. I do have the floor, sir.
Sure.
According to Robert's Rules, Mayor, I have the floor, and I was interrupted.
Sir, if you have a, if you have a comment, make it, sir, please.
Oh, I do. Thank you. Okay, I guess I'll finish. So what I like to do is give staff direction and clear direction from all of us what we want to do tonight. And essentially, they need our direction to be able to provide the information that these organizations need to move forward. So right now, I've gotten very, I've seen very good feedback from some trustees, and I'd like to see every single person on this board give staff essentially what they're looking for. If we don't make a comment or we say, yeah, that's a great idea, but I'm really not sure, they leave this room saying, okay, wait a minute, what the heck are we supposed to do? Okay, so that's my only response, trustee Rassich, was I want to give staff clear direction. I know we're not voting by roll call, but they need to know what to do and how to respond. Thank you.
So far, if you guys don't mind me, and this is where my notes kind of have me, is that there seems to be general convergence and agreement on charging a fee for the 5Ks. I have two yeses and two noes on what happens with the large community events, but the 5K events, I definitely do see to have some direction. That we will go forward with a twenty-five hundred dollar fee for those 5K events, and that at least for the next year, it seems as though, like I said, there, I haven't a full sense of things, but perhaps we wait on Plainfield Fest since there might be some other factors in play and give them some consideration for this particular year, at least until they are able to figure out what their home might look like for two thousand and seventeen. Would that be a general agreement and understanding? And again, I'm putting words in, but I'm reading between notes here.
Is there a reason we wouldn't just charge the twenty-five hundred and not only the 5K, but a minimum for everybody to start?
If that's your preference.
I'm just curious as to why we would limit it just to the twenty, to the 5K.
I'm in agreement with him, with Ed.
Some of the large, some of the larger ones aren't even paying twenty-five hundred yet.
It's one of, some of the smaller ones, kind of fundraiser at all.
And that's where I said I didn't have some clarity, and yours was one that I wasn't quite clear on, Ed, on that particular point.
The 5Ks wouldn't be part of the TIF, though, right?
Well, the 5Ks aren't in the TIF. What I think what Ed's getting at is that, and again, I'm going to put words in your mouth, trustee O'Rourke. Tell me if I'm hearing you correctly. Plainfield Fest and the 5Ks, we would be charging the twenty-five hundred dollars. For the other events that I can use the TIF funds, I can still charge the TIF, those costs. Or do you want me to charge those events twenty-five hundred as well?
TIF is a different twist.
I'm treating the TIF as a separate thing myself.
Well, maybe we just, you know, I would like to be consistent across the board. So if we could just say everybody's going to pay twenty-five and where that money comes from, if there's another option from the TIF, I can't answer that question. I don't know the details of that, but maybe that would be an easy solution. I don't know.
Okay, I plan on call, I plan on charging the full cost to the TIF for those two events. That's where, as, as, as the chief was getting at, there are five really big events that really don't fall neatly within that twenty-five hundred dollar. That's where we are going with that, treating them separately. But we can treat those all as, if they're TIF-eligible or if it's the patriotic picnic, you're saying keep those separate, everything else would get charged twenty-five hundred dollars.
I'd suggest that charge twenty-five hundred for fundraisers.
That is, that is the separation of the 5K.
They're supposed to be making money. They can't make enough to cover that. There's some other things. They're not fundraisers, and so charge on that is punitive, put it that way, so.
Do you have a question for the board? Using Mr. O'Rourke's figures of seventy-three thousand, looking at the board that you have in front of you and is displayed on the, on the big board, using the, going down to column totals of seventy-three thousand and overlooking the ninety-six, is everyone happy with the expenditures of those mentioned in red as being viable expenditures for the village? That's what you want to go ahead and have the village pay for? So no one has any questions about any of the ones that are mentioned or outlined in this report?
I guess I'm not sure exactly what you're-
Well, I mean, we have seventy-three thousand to your number, Mr. O'Rourke. And then looking down, down the, down the list, we have one that stands out, and that's our Plainfield Fest at thirty thousand. So that's over half, almost half of the expenditure. Is everyone happy with those expenditures, is what I'm asking? If they are, well, then we'll go forward.
For this year.
Is that what the proposal is, or feeling of the whole board, or at least the majority of us?
I, I guess I'm, no, I'm not comfortable with the, with the, what we're seeing here. I think that's exactly to chief's point, is that we've hit a threshold, I think, where they're having a hard time keeping up with it. Pima's getting exhausted doing it. So I, I think that's where some, we need to step in. And I think if we create a minimum threshold, you know, maybe some of these will go away. And I don't know if it's fair to us to pick and choose which ones stay and which ones go. I don't know that that's, you know, fair. I don't know how you decide which ones get to, you know.
We received a port here earlier this year that showed thirty events, and I believe it was Commander Ruggles' opinion that we should start cutting down. We should start saying no on its face before, as, as in the applicant comes in. Saying, no, I'm sorry, we're not going to allow much. We've already reached our threshold.
If I may, mayor?
Yes.
Give the board an idea. I've already been approached by six new organizers this year for 5K events. So the projected number you saw there for two thousand and sixteen in the first chart of how many events and the bar graph going up there, we've already been approached by six organizers. Of those six, one is already off the ground. The March of Dimes event will occur this month, and with your permission, they're already being granted two of them. Another organizer just called me actually this morning, the second time they've approached me. Now they think they have a viable route. They didn't even know what was needed of them. When they approached us, they thought we would plan everything for them. So that is the pattern I am seeing, is that we are increasing roughly five to six major events a year, mostly in the form of either requests for 5Ks or some of these smaller events that occur. And at first, on their initial conception, looked to be very small, such as the Relics of Saint Maria Goretty at Saint Mary's Church. When we initially met with them, their plan was they only needed one officer to make sure it was going to be safe for everybody. As we saw, that event was dynamic. We had only about three days' notice as to what was occurring in the Chicagoland suburbs with that particular event, and we had to bring in a lot of staff last minute. And so some of these events are very, very difficult for us to plan, very hard for us to sit with an organizer when their concept of what is coming is much smaller than what we know or what we see in our experience to be coming very quickly. So I would just caution the board that your consideration into the mayor's question, what you consider for this year will increase in cost every year based on contractual obligations of the village to our officers, to our other staff. So it's just something I would like you all to consider in answering the mayor's question, is his numbers will only go up every year.
I think the twenty-five hundred threshold will limit those numbers or reduce them.
I think at least two of our current 5Ks will have difficulty meeting that goal. The twenty-five hundred will substantially cut into their profits. I know one organizer has already expressed to me that he will continue with his event, but he does have to figure out a way to come up with two thousand or so, twenty-five hundred in this case, dollars to offset that expense. He does make enough currently that he, he does have more than that coming in from his event, roughly twice that amount. So as an example, it'll cut his event basically in half, his profit margin. It's enough that he feels he'll continue to go because he is seeing growth solely over the years. But again, I think there are two out there that we currently have as regular occurrences that will look at that number and may choose to find another location. One of the reasons we do have so many events is when you look back at the chart of our comparable neighbors jurisdictions, they're mostly charging either overtime or special detail rate with no use of an EMA or volunteers. So it is much more expensive to go to some of our neighboring jurisdictions than it is to host a special event here in our town.
Didn't we put a cap?
Kind of goes back to my point in saying that if we're getting a burnout in Pima, maybe we start charging for officers in replacement of that, and then we try to get some of that back with the twenty-five hundred plus, maybe a threshold of, again, ten, fifteen percent above that, whatever our actual cost is.
I thought we capped, I thought we capped that. Didn't we, didn't we at an earlier meeting say we were going to limit- meeting say, we were going to limit the five Ks, we had a, we had a set amount at that point?
We, we did have that conversation, however, the hard part is, is that we have more and more folks coming on in, and as well, we do have these costs that are going on, so the, the large part is, is we looked at this as a limiting, as a way to help to limit those events from coming on in, as well, you know, truth be told, um, it's very difficult for, uh, the, the board to be able to look somebody in the eye that's on our agenda for doing a fundraising five K, and say, no, because we've hit that limit, uh, or whatever the case may be, we don't, we don't want to put you in that trick bag, largely, that's partly why we are taking a look at this as well.
Okay, may, I'll pose the question again, does anybody have any problem with this? If it, if not, we'll go forward.
An answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with the twenty-five hundred dollar fee for most things, I think the Plainfield Fest should probably pay more in agreement with Mr. Murphy, because it's such a large event, and it is very taxing on our employees. I know everybody doesn't agree with me, but that's how I stand for now.
You know, mayor, before we move on, may I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
Uh, you know, without getting into a litany of forgiveness, uh, I would simply like to say, I was, uh, I violated parliamentary procedure this evening by criticizing trustee Peck, uh, by, not criticizing him, no, I did not criticize him, I made a, a cutting remark that was unnecessary, and, uh, it's, it's generally within my vocabulary to act like that, but, uh, I, uh, should not have said that nasty thing to him, obviously, and so, I just want to say, realize what parliamentary procedure is, and conduct yourself in that fashion. Thank you.
Okay, since we do not have any, do you have one-
Let me answer your question.
Okay, quickly, because we're going, what I'm going to do is I'm making a poll there.
Because I don't know what the value is to the village for the things in red, what are we getting out of it as a village? I'd have to look at individual line item, and to say, I approve them all, uh, I don't know that that's a justifiable decision on my part, I just don't know enough to favor all that, so I, not to say I'm not against, not, not for them, but it's just not enough information right now that's making a village expense.
I'm against the red, I think we should try to reduce it by adding a minimum for each event.
Okay, I think staff has some sort of idea, right?
Uh, yes, yes, we do.
Well, some sort of.
Some sort is probably a way to-
I mean, we've been, we've talked about it for an hour, and we're still dancing around the pole here, so, but I'll tell you what, uh, ladies and gentlemen, what I'm going to make a, a, a recommendation here, is that we, uh, suspend at this time the cow, and take special, uh, excuse me, one hundred and thirty-fifth street, and the red light camera, and continue those till, uh, the next cow, or the cow after that, whichever, and I apologize to, uh, Mr. Sergeant Munson and Legal for sitting through this, the whole thing this evening, uh, and if that's all right, we'll-
And engineering.
And engineering, yes, sorry, and then we'll, uh, go on, so, that'd be my proposal.
Okay, with that, but a quick comment, though, the, uh, the traffic study on one hundred and thirty-fifth street was extremely informative, very interesting, so very nicely done, I do hope we do discuss it, because it's a real instant inputs in there.
Unless I have an objection?
I make a motion to suspend, uh, committee the whole meeting, uh, this evening, and we'll have the remaining items on the next committee the whole meeting.
Second. That motion's been made and seconded? Trustee Wajowski? Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Sure.
Got it, yes?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich? Thank you, that motion carries.
A reminder, it's April the thirteenth, a coffee with the mayor with a, with a stand-in of Mr. Lamb, uh, April eighteenth will be the village, next village board meeting, and the twenty-fifth will be our next committee of the whole.
Taking a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, that motion carries.